... platform and will be livestreamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements in a provincial order that limits attendance at public gatherings. My name is Donald Granitstein, and I will be chairing this hearing. Panel members participating via WebEx who can be seen and heard are Lisa Valentini and Yim Chan, and we are waiting for Larry Clay, who may join us shortly. City staff will be assisting us throughout the meeting, including moderating the WebEx platform. Agents, applicants, and other interested parties participating in this virtual hearing registered in advance and will be connecting through WebEx using a compatible electronic device. Their participation will be via audio only. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Hadna Shoni, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustments of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustments considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone who wants to receive a copy of the committee's decision for an application must submit a written request by email to the general email address for the Committee of Adjustments, Toronto and East York District Office. Please include your name, address, and an email address. All Committee of Adjustments and the T-Lab notifications and appeal updates will be sent by email only. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the local Planning Appeal Tribunal, LPAT. Appeal instructions will be set out at the bottom of the committee's decision. Participants who have registered in advance will be connected to this virtual hearing and will be muted automatically upon entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant will proceed with his or her presentation if required. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter directly into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five-minute mark. When addressing the committee, please speak slowly and clearly. State your name and address. Please confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. Where required, the applicant or agent will proceed first with a presentation of the application. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent will be unmuted and will have an opportunity to rip out only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion, and the application will be taken into committee for a decision. Please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice are informed of the changes. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have the minutes of the last Committee of Adjustments public hearing been confirmed by the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Members or staff, do you have any interest to declare in any of the items scheduled for this morning's hearing?
No, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair. On item number 18, 1132A Dover Court Road, I realize that one of the registered speakers who opposes the application is the name of somebody that I believe I know. And out of an abundance of caution, since normally we can see who's opposing, given that we're on WebEx and we can't, I'm going to declare an interest on that matter out of an abundance of caution.
Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any requests to withdraw an application?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, we will now proceed with our hearing. First item is 19 Lipton Avenue. We have before us in this -- the purpose of this application is to convert the existing ancillary structure containing a temporary art studio located at the rear of the existing semi-detached dwelling into a dwelling unit. We have before us on this application materials submitted by the applicant, staff reports from planning and engineering, opposition from 17 Lipton Avenue, and a nine-signature petition and opposition from 13, 15, 17, Lipton Avenue, and 10 and 16 Eaton Avenue. The agent for the applicant is Jonathan Bencoski. Sir, could you proceed?
Yes, good morning. I hope everybody is doing well. So I am going to be relying on some of the supporting material I've put in.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Can the agent please identify himself just for other -- each person should identify themselves, and they're -- not the agents, but the speakers should identify the address that they're speaking on behalf?
Yes, Jonathan Bencoski. I'm speaking on 19 Lipton Avenue.
All right, go ahead, sir. Mr. Clay has joined us. Go ahead.
Sorry. I will be using some of the supporting documents I have filed, and I'll be referring to them in the order that they are labeled on the AIC. So before you today is an application to allow for residential use in an existing rear garage and artist studio. A couple of important --
Sir, could you speak a little slower? You're garbled, and I don't know whether it's because you're speaking too quickly or you're not speaking directly into the microphone, but please speak a little slower so we can hear you.
Yes, so, okay. Before you today is an application to allow for a residential use in an existing rear garage and artist studio. One of the important points to remember in this case is there is no construction work involved. The building as it exists today will remain exactly as is from the exterior. This is a building that does have a building permit issued and has been cleared. Now, if we could go to the third labeled CA supporting document, page two. The third one, the presentation materials three. Here we see some visuals of what it looks like today. This, on this page here, we're now looking at it from Lipton through the existing drive aisle. If we could go to the next page, please? Here we see how it appears today. As mentioned earlier, there is no work proposed to this. This had an issued building permit as well as a cleared building permit for it. The only request I am putting forth today, if you were to grant approval, would be to frost the second-floor windows that face north. The building itself will be broken down to have the living areas on the second floor. Presently, this unit is approved to be as an art studio with a five-year approval. The proposal today is to allow this to be used for residential accommodation. Now, if we could go to the second labeled supporting document? Yes, please. And if we could go to -- yes. If we look at the laneway guidelines for the City of Toronto itself, the City of Toronto Laneway Guidelines dictate that this must be located on a public lane. This property today fronts onto Lipton Avenue through a front drive aisle and through the rear through a laneway that is accessed off of Danforth. So, sorry, if we could go back to the photo book of the third labeled supporting task? Yes, and just please scroll through. Please, there's -- perfect. So here we see the entrance off of Danforth Avenue. So although not located on what is considered a public lane, this does have access from the rear. And if we could go to the second one, please? The next one, sorry, going forward in the photo book? Yes, please go forward. Yes, here we see this lane that we just saw accessed off of Danforth. What's also important to remember here -- could you go to the next picture, please? Is that there is an existing door that is permitted and allowed from the rear. The City of Toronto Planning Report speaks of this as being a garden suite, and there not necessarily being requirements for garden suites itself. Where this takes us back to is even if there were requirements for garden suites, there is no alteration proposed to this building. So circling back to the variances itself, if we could go to the public notice. If we look at the variances that are created from this application, there is not one that is a newly created variance. The dwelling, as you would see it both from the street as well as from the bird's eye of the sight, stays exactly as is. So some of these are a little technical in nature and misleading when we look at things like the permitted building length. That building length is essentially measured the entirety of the lot. In addition, the setbacks are again for the existing building itself. In terms of the approval of this, this is an optimal opportunity to add one more rental unit in a transit-oriented neighborhood. The board Danforth Line is located immediately across the street. Presently, this building is vacant.
Sir, you have 50 seconds.
Okay. Lastly, in terms of the planning letter itself, the Planning Report speaks to the appropriateness of a separation between this subject property and a more intensive residential use. I'm not quite sure I understand where they're speaking of that on the laneway side because there are no residential uses located behind the subject property. Behind the subject property, as I showed you through that lane, are the accesses for the properties front onto Danforth itself.
Your time's up, sir. All right, so does anybody -- does any panel member have any questions of the applicant?
I do, Mr. Chair. Mr. Bencoski, given that there are no standards for garden suites, so this can't be considered a garden suite in this instance, there's no -- they're not permitted under the zoning bylaw. And the -- it doesn't qualify as a laneway suite because it's not on a public laneway. Now, you've talked about the laneway off of the Danforth. I know the area very well. I know where that is. And is that a private laneway? Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We've done numerous searches to try to figure it out. We believe everybody has a mutual right-of-way over it. So everybody that would front onto Lipton -- sorry, the buildings that front onto Lipton as well as the commercial buildings on Danforth all have use of that laneway. We can't actually find -- and the owner did numerous searches, even so much as going down to the Bay Street Land Records to find out who technically owns it, but we understand it as everybody having a mutual right-of-way access over it. If that were to be considered a city lane, this would now qualify as a laneway suite and not a so-called garden suite.
But based on the photos that I saw, it's only a partial -- it doesn't run across the Danforth from block to block or anything like that, but you typically see laneways in Toronto neighborhoods run. It looks like it's a -- in my view, it looks like from the photos, it's just a short, dead-ended laneway on either side. Is that correct?
Correct, correct. I think it goes about, I would say, four to five houses to the west, and it basically dead-ends at the subject property.
Okay, and it's not considered a public laneway as far as you know?
It is not. It is not.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? We can go on to the opposition.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Bill Bilkus. I speak on behalf of my family, who owns 17 Lipton Avenue. 17 Lipton Avenue is the house that immediately neighbors the subject property. I just wanted to give you a quick note of clarification. All of the properties on Danforth Avenue, all the residential storefronts have two- and three-story residential of them. So that private laneway actually has residential balconies and backyards, all fronting the backyards of Lipton Avenue. So there is residential in that private laneway, and it is often accessed from the back and from the front of Danforth, and it's private laneway. I would like to say that we do not support the application at 19 Lipton, and this request which is before the committee today. We agree with staff that this request, 19 Lipton's request, is not minor and that this request should be rejected. This garage that we keep calling it is essentially a warehouse. Originally, and I lived here for over 20 years, it was the storage warehouse for the fruit store at the corner of Lipton and Pave. The Italian family used to store their dry goods in this warehouse, and this warehouse is actually larger than the semi-detached house in front of it. The house was rebuilt, and the picture looks nice, but it was -- I have a picture also that I submitted with my letter dated July 7th of the impact of this property's construction on our property and our neighbor's property. I don't know if the committee can see that. This is how close this was allowed to be built. It was built on a loophole. The loophole was if you let a building degrade and fall down, you can build it in the same spot as it was and not have to respect the setbacks. We objected when this was rebuilt, and I would say that the proponents' representatives' comments are misleading because the building permit when it was issued clearly states on the drawings that this building is not to be used for human habitation. There is a zero lot line setback. We were pleading with the applicant when they rebuilt this to respect the setbacks, and they ignored the request. Thank God, no one was hurt during their construction, because you can clearly see this is the backyard of 17 Lipton. How close this building is to people that actually live here. There's a family with two kids that use our backyard, and my family also owns the house next to this on the west. So at a high level, I'd like to outline a few points that are additional concerns of ours. Number one, I'm reiterating the drawings when this building was reconstructed basically said this dwelling is not for human habitation. That was clear in the middle of the drawings. The city insisted on it. Some new things on behalf of this, the application submitted is inaccurate and deliberately misleading. The basement apartment that was created when this house was renovated, it only showed a washroom there, which leads into our next arguments on engineering issues on this corner. The second entry door at the front of the above-ground portion of the basement is not shown. The rendering is inaccurate. The west side of the set shows a setback. It's zero lot line. There's no setback. And there's a fence in front of the ground floor window. When this was originally -- when this application was originally seen by the committee, the applicant said that they would make the windows opaque. That never occurred. And again, we're concerned from that perspective, from the privacy perspective. From a safety perspective, the building is not sprinkled, and again, it's clear that it was not supposed to be for human habitation. Setbacks are in issue. Windows back look directly onto our windows, bathroom and kitchen. No noise study was completed when this was -- when this application was submitted. And in addition, a new item, when you look at the kitchen of the proposed garden suite or whatever they would call it, I'm going to call it a house, that kitchen --
30 seconds, sir.
-- went directly to our property.
Mr. Bilkus, 30 seconds left.
Okay, I just want to highlight there's some sewage and engineering issues. There's a 100-year-old infrastructure that wasn't meant to support this. And in conclusion, I would just like to say that we do not agree with this application as being minor, and we would ask the committee members to side with the neighbors of this property and not allow this to proceed.
Thank you. We have Dmitry Bilkus now.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Only Bill is present in the WebEx, so maybe we can ask him if Dmitry will be presenting.
Okay. Mr. Bilkus?
Here, he's sitting beside me. Can he give his time to me?
Pardon?
Dmitry is here. He's sitting beside me. Is it possible for him to give his time to me to finish speaking?
No. We can't give you five minutes. If you have any further points, we'll give you one minute.
Okay, that's fine. So I just want to reiterate in closing that we agree that with staff that this application is not minor, that there is residents living off of the private lane on the second, third, and somehow the fourth stories of the buildings that face the Danforth. 17 Lipton will negatively be affected by this. We share a sewer connection with 19 Lipton that is over 100 years old, and that sewer connection, we've already had sewer backup issues. Adding another house to it, you know, would put us in a negative situation. In addition, we'd like to make the committee aware that the petition was signed by the immediate neighbors of 19 Lipton Avenue and both Eaton Street and Lipton Street, and that petition does not -- those people do not support this application in front of the committee. And we hope that you will see this from a neighbor's perspective, and we thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do any panel members have any questions of Mr. Bilkus?
I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Bilkus. That was helpful. If you could just help me in understanding the photos that Mr. Bencoski presented under his -- there's a photo of the structure, and there was fencing along the structure. And then when looking at the plans, now, does the structure immediately butt up to your rear lot line?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so there's no setback from your lot line and the structure where it crosses behind your lot?
No, there is not. And there's nothing on the west side as well, and that door that's showing for access is essentially also the rear lane, the private lane, is on the lot line. The entire building is essentially built on the lot line, and that's taking advantage of a loophole in the building code.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. The photos led me to believe that, and then when I was looking at the site plan, I wasn't sure if that was the case, but that -- thank you. That clarifies it for me.
Does anybody have any questions? Any other questions? Yim?
No, but I have a comment after maybe in discussion.
All right, I would like to ask a question. Mr. Bilkus, is there -- Mr. Bencoski showed us a passageway between buildings. To me, it didn't look wide enough for a fire truck, and then there's another passageway to the building beside his 19 Lipton. Are either of them wide enough for an emergency vehicle such as a fire engine?
Absolutely not. An ambulance couldn't even fit through there. So I can tell you from my experience growing up in this house, often you would see if there was a fire, the fire or if emergency personnel needed to get to even the properties on the Danforth, they would -- there was instances where they would be scaling the fence to get back there because they couldn't access the property. This property is very tightly situated, and no emergency vehicles could access it directly with ease. And furthermore, the TNC station that was built in front of 17 and 19 Lipton, the second exit for the Pave Station subway ramp, further reduced the ability, and a truck could not turn. There's no turning radius allowed there to even get close to that area. So it's a very tight site. It's very overbuilt, and quite frankly, it's dangerous.
All right, thank you, sir. Anybody have any further questions arising out of that? All right, Mr. Bencoski, do you have some rebuttal?
Yes, I do. Thank you for that. A couple of quick things. First, the building is built four inches off of the lot line. I don't really think that's an issue in this instance because this is a legal building that was built with a building permit. The entire construction of the building is brick, which is non-combustible. So in terms of a safety issue, that would have been dealt with with the initial building permit. Yes, it was built as per the original structure that was there. That is not a loophole in the building code. That is the building code. The building code allows you, under safe supervision, to rebuild a structure that is dilapidated. So again, that is not a loophole. That is the building code itself. In terms of fire access, I'm sure as most know, all of these applications are circulated to all of the departments. There is no report from Prong Fire indicating any safety issues. In addition, Engineering and Construction Services did submit a report that looked at a garbage enclosure which we have provided. There is no mention of any type of servicing concerns or anything like that. If that were a concern from ECS, that would be dealt with in the memo itself. In terms of the situation where the building sits, whether this is dealt with as a laneway suite or as a so-called garden suite, this building does exist. This building exists legally. The windows exist legally. So this building isn't coming down. We're looking to provide housing and rental housing in the downtown core that is transit-oriented. This is an optimal opportunity to do just that. Taking the guidelines of the laneway suites itself and applying it here, in my opinion, is relevant because this is an existing building. There is no change proposed at all to the exterior of this building. So any type of guideline that would come out isn't going to change the location of where this building sits. And that's all, sir.
All right, thank you. Does any panel member have any questions arising out of Mr. Bencoski's rebuttal? All right, we can take it -- we can now take it into committee. Anybody, you have a comment? Yim?
Yes, I do. I actually sided with the staff report. They have three points which are very important, and that is a tendency that the laneway bylaw is specifically written for property that qualifies as laneway. And if we go beyond that, and then they cannot find any record, is this subject lanes actually public? So I do not think that it's qualified as a laneway application. I think that we will open up a big precedence on any kind of structure behind, you can call it laneway. And especially, they do not have in record, these are legal public accesses. So I sided with the staff report. I think it's a bit premature. I think it's a bit premature, uh, because the garden, uh, suite, uh, bylaw hasn't come out yet. And it, they have applied it, uh, for, as an art studio, and I think that this is what they should stay at the moment. I, I recommend for refusal.
All right. Anyone else have any comments?
Um, I'll weigh in, Chair. Um, uh, I was looking at the juxtaposition of this property and, and what struck me is that it is actually right across from a subway station, which I think generally speaking, um, we're, uh, interested in looking at intensification and more density around subway stations. So on that regard, it would be a positive. But I, the previous decision where, uh, it was very clear that this was not to be habitable space, um, I'm a big fan, frankly, of granny suites and garden suites, but I acknowledge that the city hasn't completed its review and study of this and hasn't come up with appropriate policies yet. I think this particular application has a series of challenges to it. Um, I think nicely articulated by Mr. Bilkus. Um, I, 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 I am concerned about, you know, when someone builds something and it was specifically said it's not to be X, and then they come back a few years later and say they want it to be X. Um, there was compelling reasons why it wasn't allowed to be habitable in the first instance. And I think those reasons still stand. So, um, I, I would agree with, uh, Yim. I, I, I can't really support this. It's bolstered a little bit by the city's staff report, um, recommending refusal. So, um, I will not be in support of this application.
All right. I, 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 I agree with you, uh, Mr. Clay, and I agree with, uh, Yim. I, um, I, I don't agree, uh, Mr. Clay, with the fact that in five years ago or four years ago was, uh, stated that it couldn't be habitable because the law has changed, uh, in terms of laneway suites. This, however, is not a laneway suite. It might be classified as a garden suite when we get regulations. It might qualify, but at this point, uh, in my opinion, it's premature and I would be voting, I would not support the application either. So does someone have a motion?
Okay. I will move for refusal. Yeah.
All right. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second it, Mr. Chair.
All right. All in favor? All right. Application is refused.
Thank you, sir. Have a good day.
Thank you. Next item is number two, eighteen eight Leonard Circle. The purpose of this application is to construct a new detached dwelling with an integral garage and a rear ground floor deck. We have before us on this application, uh, material submitted by the applicant, a staff report from planning and from urban forestry. We have a twelve form, uh, twelve form letters in support, uh, from people on Leonard Circle. Uh, can we hear from Mr. Mastandrakis?
Yes. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. Um, good morning. I'm the, my name is Leo Mastandrea. I'm the agent for the owners at eight Leonard Circle. We, um, we have submitted, um, twelve letters of support.
Pardon?
From the adjacent.
Presenting.
We have submitted twelve letters of support from all the neighbors in the cul-de-sac.
Okay. Would you, would you just hold on one minute while I canvass the panel to see if they need a presentation?
Sure.
Do, does anybody feel we need a presentation on this matter?
Any questions?
No, no. Yim?
Um, maybe a quick one. Um, just a very quick one.
Perhaps, do you have a question or do you want a short presentation?
Uh, you asking me?
Yes.
Oh, uh, um, that's a short presentation.
Okay. Did you hear that, sir?
Yes. Um, so, um, we're constructing a two-story dwelling and, um, we, I submitted a package that shows, um, similar variances being approved on, uh,
Yes.
On Leonard and surrounding area. Um, I believe it's appropriate for the area and it's consistent with the bill form as well as what's been approved at the committee. I have photos and decisions attached to show you as well, which they're in the package if you saw them. But we've dealt with planning as well and they have no issues.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody, are you finished, sir?
If there's anything else, I can answer any question. No problem.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Lisa?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions. Um, one question, uh, Mr. Mastandrea, I noticed in the form letters, the purpose of the application is different from what, or the description of the application is different from what the purpose is, uh, for our purpose, uh, in the notice. You've got here a new two rear, uh, in the, in the, um, form letters of support. It describes as a new two rear addition, new second floor over existing, including garage and interior alterations. Uh, that seems to me to be different than a new dwelling with an integral garage. And then looking at the plans, it looks like, again, uh, I'm not gonna say it's a three-story, but, you know, given there's an integral garage, it has that appearance. I just want to be sure, the neighbors who have signed in support, do they understand the nature of the application? Because, you know, I don't know how much weight I'm prepared to give to the form letters because, uh, they don't seem to match exactly what is being proposed. This is a new dwelling. It's not an addition.
We, there could have been a typo on the letter, but we did show them the drawings themselves. They don't have an issue with the drawings because with that letter, we show them our proposal with the drawings. But everyone's seen the drawings and they do not have an issue with the drawings.
And the drawings match what we have before us today?
Yes.
The drawings you showed. Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Well, I don't have any questions.
Okay. We'll go into committee. Anyone have any comments or does someone want to bring forward a motion?
Um, I, I was looking around the, the neighborhood and, uh, the proposed, um, new dwelling, uh, appears to be consistent with a lot of, uh, new dwellings that have been built in the street and in the neighborhood. So I thought the variances were relatively minor. Um, and so I didn't have a, a problem or issue with this application.
Well, I agree with, uh, Larry, yes. I see that a lot of houses are similar in size and massing, uh, in the neighborhood. And, uh, and I think the variances seem to be a lot, but they seem to be minor.
All right. Do we have a, any further comment or do we have a motion?
Uh, well, if Lisa's okay, I'll, I'll move a motion to approve. I guess there's a couple of conditions. Uh, planning wants it according to plans and urban forestry condition number two.
Yes. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached house by constructing a third-story addition and a rear three-story addition with a ground floor deck and a third-story balcony. We have before us on this application material submitted by the applicant, correspondence and support from two twenty-two Winnet Avenue and three Mulberry Quest Crescent, a form letter in support signed by the occupants of four seventy-eight Champagne Drive and a thirty-three signature petition in support. We have opposition from two oh six, two oh four, two twenty-three Winnet Avenue, four oh six, four forty Arlington, one ninety-five Winnet and four forty-three Von Road. Um, Ms. Evangelista, are you here?
Yes. I am. Good morning, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I, I, Evangelista, on behalf of one ninety-three Winnet Avenue, uh, this subject site is zoned residential multi, three-story, eleven-meter height, and is one-door in from Von Road. This area includes a variety of lot sizes and building types. We have detached, detached. We have an apartment building that's just north of this property, many multiplexes, all of which have different lot sizes, FSI, height, massing and scale. The area is undergoing reinvestment, which results in larger homes than what exist. In this particular situation, the owner applied for a building permit for a two-story home. During construction, the new home would not meet the needs of their family and submitted an application in October, worked with planning, modified the plans for an additional eighty-seven square meters for the third floor, which is permitted as right. Uh, the height that we are requesting is well below our eleven meters and our length is well below the permitted seventeen. We are requesting a very minor rear yard setback of point zero one, which is consistent with many of the homes in this neighborhood, as many of the homes have, um, garages that back right onto the, the rear lot line. Uh, planning and transportation are in support and have no comments. Uh, we also have no comments for construction engineering services regarding flooding, which a couple of the neighbors in the letters of opposition did mention in their letters. Um, we are in, uh, receipt. I have read through the letters of opposition. I'll touch that. We do have forty-three signatures in support to the north, south, east and west. We do have a balcony on the third floor and under O B C, you need an additional egress from the third floor. It's a very small balcony. It's off of the walk-in closet. It's not a primary living space or entertainment space, again, as it's off the walk-in closet. There is a three-story window which, uh, four oh six Arlington did mention. That window will be of opaque nature. And I may add that that window is in the bathroom. So it's not something that, you know, will be, um, stood there and, um, looked through. And again, it will be opaque and if you wish to put that as a condition, uh, we are in agreement to that. This is an urban area and consistent to reinvestment that's occurring in this neighborhood and area, and I respectfully submit this application does meet the three tests, four tests. Sorry.
All right. Ms. Evangelista, what's the existing, um, floor space index?
The existing for, what was submitted for a building permit, the exist, uh, was approximately twelve hundred square feet. That was what was submitted for the building permit. And we are, we are asking for, um, now with the third story, which is permitted, uh, twenty-three hundred square feet.
All right. And how does that translate into, uh, the times, the area, the lot?
Right now, we are asking for, our variance is, uh, one point three four.
What's the existing?
So the additional, the existing would be approximately, uh, fifty, fifty-four. The, fifty-four.
One, five, 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 five.
The building, on the building permit that we submitted for was for seventy-four point eight six. With the third floor, that has, um, increased to one point three four.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
However, the house itself, the existing house was approximately, uh, nine hundred square feet.
Right.
Prior to construction.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions of Ms. Evangelista?
Uh, Chair, I wonder if I could ask a, a question about process? Um, so, um, right now, the third story is built. Is that correct?
Right now, there is, uh, there, the, there, the, there is a floor in the third story. It was always to be uninhabitable and now we would like to make it habitable.
There is a window up there though, right?
There is. It's a dormer. Yes.
So, um,
And the dorm, the dormer was going to be a fake dormer initially to give you the optics. Um, and so now with the providing, um, we receive approval, uh, we would like to make that a fixed window as it will be a bedroom.
So you applied for a building permit in the fall, you said, uh, that would
Yes.
accommodate the third story? Is that correct?
So we, so we, what happened was we applied for a building permit, um, to alter the existing dwelling, to add a second story, a two-story dwelling and uninhabitable space in the third story. Uh, when they started to build and the, the structure was up, it was realized that the space was not big enough for the growing family. So at that point in time, committee of adjustment was, because they started construction in September, committee of adjustment, right away, uh, they applied for committee of adjustment for the three stories. And since then, they've worked with staff to modify the plan and that's what brings us to our request in front of you today.
Uh, I'm sorry. You broke.
I think this is the, the, the part of you today.
Uh, you're breaking up. I, I don't know if you're not near your phone or... Hello?
Oh. Yes, I am, sir. Mr. Chair? Yes? Hello? Hi? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can now. So I wasn't, I didn't quite hear the end of that.
Hello?
But what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, uh, it looks like the third story is constructed on the basis of it being used as part of the residence. Um, but I'm trying to get at is, was that done in advance of, certainly God, it was done in advance of getting approvals from, from this committee, but was the building permit approved based on that third story being used for residence?
Through you, Mr. Chair, just for the committee members, there, there was a violation and there's an indication that the work went beyond the scope of the permit.
All right. Did, did you hear that? Okay. So thank you. Thank you. So I, I just want to establish, just get some sense on process here, that it would appear
Yes.
that the third story was built without the necessary approval.
So through, through you, Mr. Chair, um, that's correct. There was, um, a notice that was issued in January. Work did stop in October when it was submitted to committee of adjustment in October. Um, with the request to build a third story, there was always going to be that roof space that currently exists. So basically, um, in essence, what's happening is that roof space that was on the building permit drawings, that was, that was shown as uninhabitable, that roof space is now going to be made into a third story. So, so yes, there was a floor that was placed. We did receive the violation. Work has, had stopped right away because we received the violation in January, but we had already submitted to committee of adjustment in October. So that area in that roof space is what we are now asking for, um, for a third story. Habit, now habitable space.
I have a question.
And as you, yes.
Oh, uh, is the, was the dormer included in your drawings in, uh, way back in October when you applied for permit? I know that you said that the roof, the roof was included, habitable space, but what about the dormer? Was it, was it, um, also included at that time?
Yes.
It was a dormer. It was not.
Yes. It was, it was, uh, correct.
Okay.
There was always, through you, Mr. Chair, um, there was always, there, there was always that dormer that was included in that roof line on the building permits that were approved for, for this particular application. So now all we're doing is we're taking that uninhabitable space and we want to make it habitable, which is permitted in this area, three stories.
I was just wondering, why do you need a dormer in a, in an empty space that you are not that you are not going to use?
Well, the dormer at that time was a decorative dormer. On the building permit, the dormer was always, it was just to, just to create articulation on the front of the home. And it was, and it was, it was just a decorative dormer. And now, what we would like to do, once this is a habitable space, because it is a bedroom upstairs, we have to include a window. And that decorative dormer window will now become a used, a window that can be opened under OBC code.
Yes. All right.
So, so in a...
All right, Ms. Evangelista, I just have one question to clarify. What, you say there was this dormer on the third floor was supposed to be an uninhabitable space and now, it's going to be habitable space. And you made your application in October to the committee. But was there actually a violation on your client's part?
So what, the, the violation was the fact that they saw that the third floor now wanted to be habitable space. Okay? And the difference, there was a difference in height. The building drawings were at 9.60 and the actual as-built, per the surveyor, is 9.90. And also, well under the permitted 11 meters for this particular area. And that, and that's what we stopped working on. And we spoke with the inspectors and they were well aware that we had already submitted to committee of adjustment for the request to make the roof line, the roof area, of habitable space.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to Mr. Bruce Van Lane.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me properly?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Bruce Van Lane, homeowner of 195 Wynette Avenue. My wife and I greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak our concerns. Mr. Chair, in this presentation, I'll be addressing three points. Consistency with intent and purpose of the zoning code and bylaw, adherence to the official plan, and the impact on sunlight to the backyard of 195 Wynette. I should mention that the homeowner of 406 Arlington will be addressing privacy impacts on both the properties. If the presenter, Mr. Cockrell, could kindly go... I was going to speak to my specific submission, if you might, if you wouldn't mind doing that.
It's the first letter of objection.
Yes, it's the first letter of objection.
Page two.
So that's, it's, it was the first letter of objection that was... Mr. Chair, could this time be...
Oh, there. Everything.
Well, that, that is the photo that I wish to speak to.
All right. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, there is a huge increase in mass requested by the applicant. And from this picture, it's still possible to visualize the form of the original house. Actually, Mr. Chair, this is not the picture that I wish to speak to. Could, could the time be taken away or added to my presentation? Because this is not our submission, Mr. Chair.
It's the top of page two.
Our submission, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could the presenter kindly zoom into the photo top left at 300%? Just a little bit. Okay. Well, I, I think the point is visible. So what we see to the right of the window, can Mr. Chair and the committee member see the change in building width?
Aligned.
Is it, Mr. Chair, can you see the change in building width just to the right of the window?
Yes.
Okay. So below that, there's two different colors of brick. Where the cursor just was, the lighter color of brick, that was a single-story extension at the back. And to the front was a story and a half. And everything else has been added. The GFA is now 250% of what it was. 250%. And the floor space index is 68% more than permitted. So as concerns to respecting of intent and purpose of the zoning bylaws, the increase in mass, the GFA in the floor space would suggest definitely not. No respect. Point number two. The official plan is not adhered to. 193 Wynette is part of a neighborhood, which is the official designation for houses in this area. From Chapter Four, Page One of the City of Toronto Official Plan, the following applies. Physical changes to our established neighborhoods must be sensitive, gradual, and fit the existing physical character. Let me restate. A GFA of 250% of the original, exceeding the permissible floor space index by almost 70%. Sensitive? Mr. Chair? Gradual? Fitting the existing physical character? We think not. Number three. Impact on sunlight to the backyard of 195 Wynette. If the presenter could kindly zoom into the photo on page three of our submission. Again, say 300%. Thank you. These houses are oriented east-west. With our property to the north, it's pretty clear the dramatic reduction to sunlight our backyard now receives. The apple tree visible on the left is already showing signs of distress because of the lack of light. These obstacles were enjoyed both by ourselves and by our neighbors. I've mentioned that Mr. DeBrow will be mentioning privacy issues with regard to both our property and his. In summary, Mr. Chair, my wife and I, oh, I'm just reminded by my wife that there is a point that needs to be addressed with respect to the agent's submission. She claims that the applicant has said that he needs this larger house for his family. Mr. Chair, this statement strains credulity. It is a matter of public record that the applicant was the owner, is the owner of 205 Witchwood, which is a committee of adjustment hearing for which there was a decision rendered in February and then reissued last month. He is not going to live in this house. This is his business to do this kind of renovation and then resell.
Your time is up. Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Thank you ver, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
All right. Can we go to Sylvester DeBrow?
Do the members have any questions?
Yeah. Sorry. Do we, does the panel have any questions? No questions. Okay. Mr. DeBrow? Is he on?
Mr. DeBrow, are you there?
Yes. Hi. Oh. Oh. Hello? Oh.
What's usually the problem?
Okay. Mr. DeBrow, are you there?
Is this muted?
Yeah. Okay.
Hello? Right there, right there. We just saw it. Unmute, unmute.
Hello?
Yes. Please proceed, sir.
There, so there's a bit of an echo coming through on your end.
Okay. Is he disconnected?
He just disconnected.
Okay. So I'll go to the next speaker and we'll come back to him. Helen Agnostopoulos.
Hi. Hi. My name is Helen Agnostopoulos. I live at 436 Arlington and I would like my name to be removed from the support document because it was obtained with misinformation. And I also wonder if the other support signatures fully understood what they were signing. After researching and hearing and uncovering what I've uncovered, this is not a minor variance, more like an abuse of the whole permit process, which seems to be the trend lately. I've noticed it with some other builds in our neighborhood, namely, on Rushton last year. So I just want to state that I'm against, opposed to this build and I'd like my name to be removed from the support document.
All right. Do you have any, any more information or evidence with respect to the impact on your property?
I'm not as close to there, but I do have concerns about the property tax being affected in our area. I do have concerns about the sewage that's happening in the area. And like Bruce and Mr. Andrade, if I was their direct neighbor, I would be concerned about, you know, the sunlight, et cetera, that, that would be affecting my backyard.
All right.
And I, my concerns are that lately, I've noticed a trend of rogue builders that do as they please and then beg for forgiveness afterwards and try to get variances to accommodate what they want done. And I, I just don't think that's right.
All right. Do you have anything further to say?
That's it.
All right. Does any, do any of the panel members have any questions? No questions. Can we go back?
I, I have one, I have one question to the applicant.
Oh, not yet.
Oh, we're, we're, we're going to come back to the applicant.
Okay. All right. Bye-bye.
So can we go back to Mr. DeBrow?
Yes. Is anyone hearing me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. My name is Sylvester DeBrow. I live at 06 Arlington Avenue, which is the property. My family and I live at this property, which is directly behind the house of 113 Wynette. And we have some privacy concerns with the, with the construction of this property. First, I, I want to say that all the windows in the house, including especially the second floor and the third floor window, look directly into our backyard. And there's, it's also a complete lack of privacy also for, for 195, which is the gentleman who just spoke in opposition, 195. And from this picture that you can see right now, if you go, you zoom into it, that balcony at the top there looks right into my backyard and the window and the second floor window and also right down on the property of 195. And because that house has been extended further back, everything seemed to be closer now to us, to the backyard, to our backyard. All we see, all we see from our home is all the windows in the house. That's all we see. And the sunlight, as far as the sunlight is concerned, as you can see, just over the house where the clouds are, once the sun reaches that area, it cuts off all the sunlight in the yard and 195 also, at 195's backyard. Our view also is compromised because all we see is this home, this huge, huge home right to the, to the backyard. I just want to point out also that the supporting documents that the, that the presenter, that, that the owner of, I have to say, the owner of 193 provided with other homes in the, in the neighborhood. If you look, you would notice that they never produce the backyard photos of these homes and what effect it might have on the other neighborhoods. Right? And also, from the, from the, from the picture, and also from this picture here, well, not this picture, but the supporting documents from the, from the, from 193 Wynette, the photo that they, the photos that they provided, they use this, use the apple tree in the backyard as a background of taking the picture so you can't really see into my backyard. So it's a misrepresentation of what you actually see. So on those grounds, I would say it's going to be detrimental if this building continues. And it would be, it would be totally, I would say, I, I would like the city not to permit it because of the fact that, of the privacy issues that it's going to, how it's going to affect myself, the view, the sunlight, and how it's also going to affect 195, which is the house of the gentleman who just spoke immediately next to him.
Mr. DeBrow, are there other three-story houses on, on Wynette or Arlington in, in the immediate area of this house?
No. None at all.
Are there, are they bungalows? Are they two stories? What type of house is there?
Two, two stories and bungalows.
And so while this house is within the bylaws in terms of height, it appears to be much higher than any of the surrounding houses. Is that correct?
That's correct. The second floor of that house, the top of the second floor is at the height of all the houses. So when you look at the second floor of that house, it's already at the top of all the houses in the neighborhood.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? No further questions. Thank you, sir. We'll go back to Ms. Evangelista.
Hello. Hi. So let's address a couple of it. So there is a, there is a three-story apartment building that is just down the street at, just down the street of Wynette. So that, there is that. There are multiplexes. You'll see that, you know, again, the area is undergoing reinvestment, regeneration. And this is an RM, residential multi, 11-meter height, three-story area. It's, it's zoned as of right. Now, let's address the sunlight issue. So our, our length of the house, we don't have a length variance. So in speaking to Mr. Van Lane's comments regarding the sunlight, the length of the house, we don't have a length variance nor do we have a height variance. variance, nor do we have a height variance. Are we asking for additional floor space? Yes. Through you, Mr. Chair, we are. However, the envelope of the home is consistent with the zoning of the neighborhood. It's well below the 11 meters in height. It's it's well within the length of what is permitted. And this additional area that we're asking for, which is approximately an additional 900 square feet, is going to basically go right into the roof. So that roof will always be there. That height will always remain. That length will remain. That is permitted. What we are asking for is for that additional livable space, which will fit right into the roof area. And that's the additional 900 square feet that we're asking for. So we're not going to make any further additional revisions or modifications to the envelope of the house. What we have as the envelope of the house is permitted as of right. Privacy, as I mentioned earlier, yes, there is a small balcony on the third story. That is three stories. Under the Ontario Building Code, you need an additional egress. There has to be another way to get out, right? So and that that small area is just strictly for OBC purposes, because that's part of the walk-in closet. It's the walk-in closet right in front of it, if you will see on the second floor plan. The the window on the third floor that Mr. DeBrow mentioned for privacy, that window is part of the bathroom. And as I mentioned earlier, I we have absolutely are in are in agreement to making that window opaque. So they cannot see into our bathroom and we cannot look out. Now, let's talk about the second story, because I understand that, you know, Mr. DeBrow mentioned that there's a lot of. So the second story, the height of the two stories is approximately 7.46 meters. So the top of the second story is 7.46 meters. And we're, again, permitted 11. So, you know, that, again, is as of right. The sunlight, when we look, if you refer to pictures on page four, I stood on the third floor, which is the photo on the right, and I stood on the second floor, which is the photo on the left. Now, yes, granted, okay, there is foliage on the tree, but that is primarily when everybody is around and out and looking out their windows. Privacy goes both both ways, overlook and onlook. And as I mentioned, we will put opaque windows on the third floor, so that that will satisfy the privacy issue from the third floor. The second floor is 7.46 meters above, which I believe they have, you know, windows above second-story windows, too. So our sunlight.
So you're you're
Our length of our building.
You've got about 30 seconds, Ms. Ev-
And you'll you'll see you'll see you'll see on pictures on page two that there are homes, the homes that are being reinvested in the neighborhood are are more swaying to the three-story 11-meter height. And what we have is consistent. There is another development that is going in on 439 Vaughn Road, nine homes, three stories, which will also have balconies that is going under committee of adjustment soon. So with this, I respectfully submit that asking for an additional 900 square feet to be into the roof line is not egregious. It's additional habitable space. And with this, I respectfully submit that we are consistent with what is being now submitted within the neighborhood and the area.
Okay. Thank you. Do any panel members have any questions? Jim, you said you had a question of the applicant?
Yes. My question is that the applicant is asking for 1.34 times the FSI. Do you have any justification to ask for that density of the area?
I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, that was broken up. I'm sorry. I couldn't. It was in and out.
She's looking for your your justification for a 1.34 times the area of the lot.
Yes.
So and, okay, and
Rather than just what you want.
I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. Can you repeat that?
Yes, please.
Oh, I just like to know what justification you have to ask for 1.34. Can you get give me some examples of new developments in the neighborhood or something like that to justify that?
Okay, so like, there is a development that is going in directly next door, too. This home is one in from Vaughn Road. There is a development that is going in to 439 Vaughn Road, and their FSI's are going to be up to 1.43. The area, and as I as I mentioned earlier, through you, Mr. Chair, yes, we are asking for 1.34. We are permitted 0.80 in this neighborhood. And we are asking for an additional approximately 900 square feet. That 900 square feet, optically, is it going to be viewed from the street? No, it's going to be it's going to be in the roof line of the home. And that home, we're not asking for height, nor are we asking for length. We are asking for that additional 900 square feet so that we can have that habitable space in the roof line, which is the direction and the move forward for this neighborhood and for this area and this community.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions? All right. Thank you. We'll take it into committee now.
Mr. Chair, if I could begin, I do have some comments on this application. I under thank you for all the excellent presentations. I have to say, I understand what Ms. Evangelista is saying about the height and the length of the building complying with the bylaw. But, you know, in my view, the FSI also helps to temper those sizes of buildings on appropriate lot sizes. And in my view, a building of this size and height that meet the maximum of the zoning bylaw does not fit on this lot. I feel this is an imposing structure. And that is reflected in the FSI. So I'm not supportive of this application. I don't think it meets the four tests. I don't think it's a minor variance based on the the FSI and what exists in the area right now.
I also, Larry, you want to make a comment first? So I'd like to make a comment, too. Although we are supposed to look at the process, in this case, the process seemed to have done a lot of change my opinion, because even the neighborhood is a is a neighborhood, even in the official plan, any kind of change should be gradual or reflect the character of the neighborhood. And the process has been taken is almost give us no chance to for the community to look at what you're proposing. And you said that you have already applied for committee adjustment, sounds like you will get the proof. And given us very little chance to actually evaluate it as independent independently of what you want. And I think that although the height envelopes, it seems that it's feasible to the zoning bylaw, but we don't forget a lot of times with this kind of development, we also consider the impact to the to the to the neighborhood, to the immediate adjacent property. And I think that it's not that I I think the impact is is too great. I do not look because I do not the neighbors, but they have given the chance of discussion in this in this process. So I'm with Lisa. I don't think I can support this application.
Mr. Clay?
Yeah, I'll weigh in. Three points. Chair, you made the observation by a couple of the residents that this area appears to be one where the existing stock en massing is one and a half, two stories. And I was looking around this neighborhood, and that seems to be the case. This particular proposal does tend to stick out quite dramatically from the existing stock. So that's one thing. The second thing, the proponent made the point that the church next door is being redeveloped with townhomes, which are going to be consistent with this application. However, that's premature. Those townhomes, I think, will have to come here for review and approval. So I think it's premature to accept to expect that that sets a standard when it hasn't yet been approved. And I think, thirdly, and probably most importantly, and I appreciate that word to look at the application on its merits, but I, too, am very concerned about process. I'm not convinced at all by the agent's view that this was originally going to be unhabitable space. We just put a dormer in there, and now we want it built. I looked at the the drawings and the photos that quite clearly this has been built from the get-go with the idea of that third story being a residential thing. So, you know, Building Department, rightly so, has put a stop order on this, subject to getting approval. I find that these instances where builders, agents, applicants proceed with something that they know is illegal and then come back and ask ask for approval troubles me a lot. And for those reasons, I would agree with my colleagues, and I don't think I can support this application.
All right. The the application for the townhouses on Vaughn Road is it's on Vaughn Road. I don't know how close it is to this particular site, but Vaughn Road is a different kettle of fish than Winnet. Vaughn Road has apartments, has churches, all kinds of things. So I think it's difficult to say that this is a precedent. And as Mr. Clay says, I'm not sure it's been approved or not. We did have an application with respect to replacing a church at Vaughn Road, and I'm not sure whether it was Winnet or another street, probably not. But in any event, I agree that this seems to be much too much for for this area. So do we have a motion?
I'll bring forward a motion, Mr. Chair. I'm going to bring forward a motion for refusal of the application based on the fact that, in my view, it doesn't meet the four tests, in particular, meeting the purpose and tenet of official plan and the zoning bylaw.
Do we have a second, there? Mr. Clay?
I'll second that, Chair. Yeah.
All right, all in favor? Application is refused. Thank you. 287 Donlands Avenue. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by reconstructing a front porch and constructing a rear one-story addition. Before us in this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. We have a report from planning and a report from urban forestry. We have correspondence in support from 242 Donlands and 28 Donmore, and we have three form letters in support. Mr. Smith?
Good morning. Can everyone hear me? Okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, fellow committee members, for joining us in this hearing from your homes in order to make this meeting possible. I'm speaking in regards to 287 Donlands. And as you mentioned, there was three additional letters of support added last night that kind of fell through the cracks of COVID communication when we were locked down. They were obtained in June.
Mr. Smith, I just want to canvass the panel to see if we need a presentation. Does anyone feel we need a presentation?
No, I don't need them.
Okay. We thank you, Mr. Smith. We're going to proceed into committee to discuss the matter without the necessity of a presentation. Does anyone have any comments?
I just have a question of the Mr. Smith. Have you seen the planning memo recommending the condition in terms of the front yard setback?
Yes, I did. In regards to the planning report, it suggests to stay true to the elevations which were provided that we are speaking to.
Yes. I just wondered if you had any issues with that condition?
No, I mean, we had planned to replace the porch literally in in place. And as you know, there's other areas within Toronto where the zoning bylaw has already got a comprehensive pass of replacing as is porches. But unfortunately, this particular zoned area, we have to get a variance.
Right, right. Okay. I just want to make sure you were familiar with that, because in my view, this seems to be a very straightforward application. You're reconstructing the front porch and adding, what I would say, a very modest one-story addition. I think your variances are in keeping with what is currently in the neighborhood. And I think, in my view, they meet the four tests. I'm in support of this application, subject to the conditions set out in the planning department memo, just to ensure that the front yard setback doesn't extend up to a second story.
Any further questions?
No.
All right. Can we have a motion?
I'm prepared to bring a motion, Mr. Chair, for approval of the application, subject to the planning condition set out that we just spoke about, and in addition to urban forestry condition number two.
We have a second.
I'll second that. I'll second that. I reviewed the file, and I think that's a formidable development.
All right. Thank you. All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
87th 89 Hammersmith Avenue. Purpose of this application is to convert the existing building containing four dwelling units into a building containing six dwelling units. The additional dwelling units will be located in the basement. We have before us in this application material submitted by the applicant and correspondence in opposition from 104 and 100 Scarborough Beach Boulevard. Mr. Gain? Well, just just, Mr. Gain?
Yes, good morning.
All right. Could you just hold on while I canvass the panel to see if we need a presentation? Does anyone feel we need a presentation on this matter?
No.
No.
All right. Thank you, sir. We don't need a presentation. We're going to go into committee. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Or do we have a motion?
I have no problem with this application in the sense they are not going to do any changes in the exterior. I think it's just everything is within the building inside. I have no problem with it. So I will be in support.
So are you making a motion?
Oh, there are conditions. I would like to make a motion to approve to approve this application.
All right. Do we have a second, there?
Yeah, I'll second. I just wanted to, I mean, there were a couple of letters of opposition on this one, but primarily in respect of parking. So everyone gets the parking issue. It is a challenge. But I think this neighborhood, that close to Queen Street East, is close to good transit and in an area where additional rental accommodation is appropriate. So I would second Jim's motion.
All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you. 17 Rockwell Avenue. Purpose of this application is to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with a basement, secondary suite, rear basement walkout, and a second-story side balcony. In this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. We have reports from planning and transportation. We have two form letters in support from 12 Rockwell and 121 Blackthorne. And we have opposition from 131 Prescott Avenue. Mr. Barrett?
Good morning, committee members. Can you hear me clear, please?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. So as I said, I'm Graham Barrett of 1575 Dundas West. I'm the agent for the owner of 17 Rockwell.
Okay.
I do have a presentation prepared. This is a bit of an odd situation, so I'm sure you'd like an explanation.
Well, I think there's a lot of variances, so I think we should have a presentation.
Gladly. This is quite possibly the strangest minor variance application I've seen. And the variances are 100% the result of the lot size, which is tiny. This property is constrained that building anything that would begin to satisfy the needs of any homeowner will inevitably trigger numerous variances from the zoning bylaw. So this lot is about 127 square meters, which is just over 1,350 feet. It's about the size of a mediocre three-bedroom apartment. On this lot, the required front yard setback line is located behind the required rear yard setback line. I've submitted supporting material. That's on page one. You can disregard the footprint is shown on that site as it's from an earlier version of the plans, but it's just there to illustrate the point that one would literally have to defy the laws of physics to build a home that complies with the bylaw in terms of front and rear yard setbacks, no matter how small it is. The entire front yard of this property is city property also. If you look at the next page of the supporting material I've submitted, there's a couple of photos there. Just make sure we're looking at the same thing. Yeah, exactly. So that is the front view of the house and the front yard. Just a moment. Everything north of those front steps is city property. So this creates, exaggerates, and exacerbates most of the variances, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 9, and 10. Variance number 6 is the result of a design element to allow more light into the second floor. So we're proposing a modest two-bedroom plus den home. So we're proposing a modest two-bedroom plus den home of 174 meters square, or approximately 1,870 square feet, for the owner and her daughter, with a secondary suite in the basement to help offset the cost of living in the city, which we all know is very high these days. This will also help provide additional rental housing, which can be well-served by the St. Clair Streetcar Line 200 meters to the south, and also increase density and intensification near transit, which is encouraged by the official plan. I did try to work with planning staff, and we did, in fact, increase the west side yard setback by .3 meters, but they wanted even greater side and rear yard setbacks, which did not make any sense for my client. Creating greater side yards or rear yards does nothing but create useless space, and building anything smaller really wouldn't meet her needs. Now, the current conditions are shown on pages three and four of the supporting material I've submitted. So if you're, the top picture, that is the east side yard as existing, facing a laneway. The bottom picture is the west side yard. There's a tiny yard there that is really not particularly useful. I have read that staff report, and I know that it says that this proposal is not in keeping with the intent of the official plan, specifically when it comes to respecting and reinforcing the general physical pattern in a neighborhood. But I would argue that this is a part of the general physical pattern of this neighborhood. There are numerous other very small lots with no front yards, or rather, front yards that are actually city property. If you look at pages five through 11 of my presentation materials, all of these have been to the Committee of Adjustment for Minor Variance Applications. I've submitted a spreadsheet and another document detailing other nearby approvals, and it's sorted by maximum meters squared from the lowest to the highest in order to illustrate that there are many other severely limited lots in this area. These homes are the top seven on that spreadsheet, exclusive of the subject property. The one that jumps out to me the most and is the most similar to 17 Rockwell is 2 Greaves Avenue on page six. If you want to pull that up, that'd be great. This lot has a newer, larger, taller home on it, similar to what we're proposing, but the entirety of the front yard is city property, and its maximum FSI was 68.53 meters squared. From my calculations, that puts the lot size at about 114 meters squared, and they were permitted to build something that will adequately house a family. So this is certainly an interesting feature of this neighborhood, of these very, very small lots with no front yards to speak of. There will be a parking space, but it will continue to be on city property. I have read the transportation comments, and we are fortunate that this property is located in a ward without a moratorium on front yard and boulevard parking spaces. The owner will be applying for one, but would like to see what happens today before expending that effort. If for some reason that parking space were to be denied by transportation in the future, then she's open to filling in the existing driveway with soft landscaping and restoring the curb, although this is not at all what she hopes to do. We are aware of, I believe there's an urban forestry condition as well. There's a tree in the front, and we're fine with obtaining a permit for that. The tree is not shown on the encyclopedic survey, but you can see it on one of the photos showing the front yard. So I'm not sure if we have an official urban forestry condition, but it looks like that tree will be covered by the tree by law. I personally hand-delivered letters explaining this proposal to 10 neighboring homes, and as you mentioned, we did obtain a few letters of support which have been submitted. I am also aware of one letter of opposition that was sent previously, and I spoke to the sender on the phone a while back. She was unaware that the entire front yard was city property, and she was a little shocked but more than a little concerned about the variances without proper context and details. I believe that I addressed her concerns, and I have followed up on a couple of occasions, but I haven't received a response. So we have no updated letter of opposition at least, so hopefully she's not worried about it anymore. In the context of this property with these severe limitations of the site, the variances are minor in nature. The proposal is suitable for the development and use of the land, as there isn't much else that can be done on such a small lot to make it worthwhile to the owner. It really only makes sense to take advantage of the usable space rather than using it as narrow strips of landscaping in order to maximize living space. I think this meets the intent of the zoning by law in that the zoning by law doesn't really make any sense for this particular property and many others in the area. When your rear yard setback is in front of your front yard setback, it's difficult to accurately gauge the validity of the intent of the zoning by law for this specific property. I believe, however, that this does fit the intent of the official plan for a neighborhood's designation, as we will be increasing density and providing a secondary suite. In conclusion, this will be a tasteful addition to the neighborhood and a drastic improvement over what is currently existing, and it will not negatively impact the streetscape or the surrounding area. Thanks for your time.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? No questions? So we can go into committee. Does anyone have comments? Or does someone want to bring a motion?
Well, I'll just weigh in, Chair. This, you know, on the surface of it does look like an awful lot of variances. But I was happy to get a presentation because when I was reading this material, it was quite confusing to me in terms of what was actually being proposed. It is an unusual and unique lot in the neighborhood, and I was initially kind of concerned with the degree and number of variances, but having heard the presentation, I do kind of appreciate the logistical issues with trying to rebuild on this lot. I'm not now as concerned as I might have been when I'd read the initial material, so I now don't have any problems or issues with this application.
Does anyone have, anyone else have any comments?
I have similar comments of the very, in the beginning, when I looked at the file, it seems to be like trying to build too much on a very small lot. But I was surprised that also that they were the back, that's not objected. And I thought if there's no opposition, maybe with this way, way strange actually, a lot, and also with no front yard, you know, that it is a way, you need to trade. But after the presentation, I do agree with Larry that a lot of things are clear in my mind that may, the application might fit into the context.
All right. We have any, do we have a motion then?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to bring the committee members' attention to the report from right-of-way, where they have indicated that if the members are leaning towards an approval, they would like the obsolete driveway in the right-of-way to be removed and landscaped, or the applicant could also apply for front yard parking, but that's a whole other process. So if you were leaning towards an approval and you wanted to impose a condition that relates to those concerns, I was going to suggest that the condition, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall resolve the condition of the obsolete driveway located within the visible right-of-way to the satisfaction of the manager permits and enforcement parking, and then in brackets, by either reinstating the area with landscaping or obtaining approval for front yard parking. And then they can work with Toronto or with the right-of-way management people on how to resolve that component of the proposal. If you're interested, you don't have to impose that condition if you don't think it's an issue.
Mr. Barrett, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I am. I read the transportation report, and I spoke with the owner about it, and she is fine with doing either option A or B. As I mentioned in my comments, ideally, we will be getting a front yard or boulevard parking space on that existing driveway. Failing that, it'll have to be filled in.
All right, thank you. Do we, any further comments or questions, or do we have a motion?
Lisa, I assume you're fine, but I would then move a motion to approve this. I thought the Deputy Secretary of Treasures proposed wording was quite elegant and appropriate and subject to that condition, which frankly, I can't remember exactly what it was, but I'm sure it was great.
All right, do we have a secondar?
I will second that.
A secondar, Vim?
I will second it.
All right, all in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
122 Curzon Street. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing three-story semi-detached house by enclosing a portion of the front porch and constructing a rear one-story addition with a rear deck. The garage located to the rear of the existing house will be reconstructed. Before us on this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. We have reports from planning and urban forestry. Mr. Shirzadfar?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members. I'm the agent and designer for the home on 122 Curzon.
Okay, so let me just canvass my panel to see if they need a presentation. Do we need a presentation on this matter?
No, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair, there is an individual who would like to speak on this application, so perhaps a presentation is necessary. Is that what it is?
All right, so I don't quite understand. Mr. Carroll, is that who you're talking about? Says he's representing the application. What does, I thought you, as the agent, were representing the application. What is Mr. Carroll doing?
Mr. Carroll's actually the contractor on the project. He's just listening in on this, just to see how it goes basically.
Okay, so we don't, we've decided we don't need a presentation, so we don't need to hear any further from either of you. So we're now in committee. Does anyone have any?
Chair, I wonder if I could just ask the applicant a quick question. I notice this is a semi. Have you spoken to the owner of the adjacent semi?
We have. They've actually done a front yard setback that they needed our approval previously, so we're doing a similar kind of enclosure in the front porch, so they're completely aware of what's happening here.
Great, thank you.
Yes, Ian?
I have no questions. Yeah, I think it's quite, I'm in support of this application. I think it's reasonable.
Okay, so do we have any further comments? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I would like to move approval, subject to the staff report that they've enclosed one condition, and also a forestry F2 condition.
I thought it was F1. Is it F2 or F1?
F1.
F1? Yes.
F1, okay.
Okay, do we have a secondar?
Mr. Chair, I'll second this. This is a very small addition, in my view, at the back, and just enclosing part of the front porch, so I think that's in keeping with what's going on, so I'm happy to second it.
All right, all in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight, 57 Atlas Avenue. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing one-story detached house by constructing a front porch with a canopy, a front one-story addition, a second-story addition, and a rear two-story addition with a basement walkout and a ground-floor deck. We have before us on this application material submitted by the applicant, correspondence and opposition from 55 and 51 and 53 Atlas Avenue. Okay, so because of the opposition, we better proceed with a presentation. Tay Ryuk?
Yes, sir.
All right. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. My name is Tay Rook, planner for the owners of the property at 57 Atlas Avenue. The proposal before you today is for an addition, second story addition and one-story addition to the existing one-story dwelling. There are variances related to side yard setback, front yard setbacks, main wall heights for the front and rear main wall, and also FSI. Speaking to the front yard setback, the front yard setback is actually the existing condition that's there today. What's actually happening now is that the portion that shows as the proposed porch with canopy, that is being opened up. That's completely enclosed right now, up to the 3.64 meter mark on the front yard setback. All of the other setbacks on the south and on the north sides, and also the rear, are consistent with existing side yards, with the existing setbacks. Further, you'll also note that the building itself is 17 meters in length, which is in compliance with the bylaw, and none of the eve projections on either the north side or the south side changes from what the existing conditions are. You'll also note that on 55, on the site plan, you'll note that that property is actually situated a little bit closer than what the proposal is in terms of the existing condition. This is a corner property with a driveway that's located on the flanked yard, which affords off the Normana Avenue, and we did receive letters of support, and unfortunately, they weren't accepted by committee, but what I can inform you is that there was three letters of support that were received from 18, 17, and 20 Normana Avenue, and unfortunately, the committee members, because it was received after the deadline, would not accept it, but we do have them. Once again, in terms of the main wall heights for the front and rear, when you look at the front and rear elevation, the reason for the variance is because the style of roof that's being proposed is a gable roof, and what that shows, and what that is, is that where the measurement is measured to is basically, if you look at the front elevation, is measured to the peak or where the soffit is, to the bottom peak of that roof. And because it's a gable roof, the entire roof line is considered as part of the main wall, whereas if it was a different styled roof, maybe a more of an Edwardan roof, or whatever the case might be, it would be measured to the soffit. So that's why there's a main wall height, a main wall height variance for the front and rear walls. However, you also note that there is no building height, overall building height variance that's being sought. The overall building height on this proposal is 10.61, whereas 11 meters is permitted. And there was opposition letters received from neighbors to the south where they were concerned about the front yard setback, and what I would submit to the committee is that nothing changes in terms of the front yard setback. That remains exactly the same. The only difference is that instead of being entirely enclosed at the front yard, there's a porch that's being, that is being proposed with a one-story element at the front. In terms of FSI at .89, there are similar densities in the area at .89 or greater. This is a very tightly knit neighborhood, and the variances before you in terms of side yard setbacks, front yard setbacks, rear yard in terms of main wall heights, and also FSI is more than consistent with what's existing in the area. The proposal itself is something that is more than, is more than attractive, and in terms of elevations and the way it presents the street in terms of height and massing, is will be consistent in terms of roof lines and heights found throughout the neighborhood. If there's any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chair, I do. You've touched upon it, Mr. Rook, in terms of the height. That was the one thing that grabbed my attention was the front and rear main wall height. I understand it's a peaked roof, and there are other two stories, similar-looking structures. Will the height of your proposal be similar in nature to what currently exists in terms of the two stories? I noticed the adjacent neighbor has a two-story peak roof.
Correct. So the roof, sorry, the roof lines will be similar in nature. What you find along Atlas Avenue, along the stretch is that Atlas from Eglington Avenue, as you proceed north, north of the site, there is a grade difference. There's a hill basically that rises up, and what you see is progression of heights of houses in terms of heights that gets higher as you further go person towards north. So this house itself, at its proposed height, the main wall height's at 10.31, would be consistent with that gradual increase in height.
Houses.
Sorry, Lisa, I had muted you if you can repeat that.
Oh, sorry. How does that, I'm not quite clear. Is that, how does that compare to the neighboring houses in terms of height? It's going to be similar to?
Correct, it would be similar to.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any further questions?
No.
All right, thank you, sir. Move on to Judy De Souza.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I live currently at 57 Atlas Avenue, and I am opposed to the proposed variances. It represents a significant blocking of our view from our porch of Normanna Avenue. All of the variances, both from the front and the back, would limit the green space around the house, which would in turn increase the greenhouse effect. The front extension is so massive, it would obstruct our north view and would prevent our enjoyment of the use of our front porch. The proposed changes would result in the obstruction of the north view and would result in an ever-present loss of privacy. The proposed extension of the third floor similarly will obstruct the privacy and enjoyment of our front and backyard, and I believe it is an equivocation that they are presenting similar to the house that you just reviewed on Winnet. The height of the proposed building is going to be intended for habitable use. Right now, they have presented it in their drawings as if it is not. It is going to be used for habitable use. I believe it's an obfuscation, and again, an issue of intent and purpose. They presented to the neighborhood as if they were going to be using this for their own single-family dwelling when they were getting signatures, but in fact, it is not. It is intended for rental. They are changing the neighborhood significantly. It is not gradual. It is not sensitive. I am strongly opposed to this development of 57 Atlas Avenue as proposed. I have lived in the neighborhood for over 40 years. My mother's house is 53 Atlas. I'm at 51 Atlas. My mother is a senior. She did submit something in writing. She's beside me, and she also would like to signify her opposition and register her opposition to this proposal. If she could speak rather than...we weren't able to get her online at the same time because I'm presenting and she's beside me, if that would be allowed.
What's your mother's name?
Shirley Stevens. She's the owner of 53 Atlas Avenue. I'm Judy De Souza.
All right, she's listed as the next speaker.
Perfect.
So are you finished?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I would appeal to the committee to be proactive rather than having to have a structure that's built when we clearly know what the intent is. If you look at the drawings, they are significant variances well above the existing structures on the block, and they exceed the variances that are...that all of us have. Why are they putting in a dormer in the third floor if it's not intended for habitable use?
All right, well, do any panel members have any questions of Ms. De Souza?
Just quickly, Chair, if you don't mind. I just wanted to get some sense...so you live at 51, did you say? So that is...so that's two or three houses down the road?
Two houses. I'm the third house from...
You're the third, okay.
My mother is the second house. She's at 53.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions?
I just have a comment. Ms. De Souza, the way I understand the application is that the front yard setback is currently at what is being proposed. So in terms of blocking your view from your porch, I understand the existing house is currently sits where the proposed house is going to sit. So is that the case right now? Does the existing house block the view of your front porch?
No, it doesn't, but what they had shown in their drawing, if I understood it clearly, was that they were extending beyond in front and to the side and to the rear in their drawings, and that those were in excess of the variances that are allowed.
Yeah, it was my understanding that...
But that's how I read the drawings.
Okay, maybe we can get some clarification from the applicant, because my understanding is that the front yard setback is currently exists and that that's going to be...
It doesn't block it right now, does it? But what's proposed will.
Okay, thank you.
Front, rear, and side.
All right. Thank you. Move on to Shirley Stevens.
Yes, I'm here. Ma'am? I live at 53 Atlas Avenue, and I'm with...right now, I'm at 51 Atlas Avenue with my daughter, and I do agree with all that she has said. I endorse it.
Do you have any further points to make?
Well, further point is, you're changing the neighborhood with this triplex proposed. Opposite us is a two-story school, and then if this comes up, and we are all single-family dwellers, it will change the look of the neighborhood.
Okay, do you have any other points to make, Ms. Stevens?
Is it higher? Is the building going to be higher than the school?
I don't know that.
Because the school is two stories, and this looks like it's going to be even higher. It'll turn out to be a neighborhood looking like an apartment building.
Okay, do you have any further points?
No, that's it.
Okay.
The current...
All right, do any panel members have questions of Ms. Stevens? No questions? All right, thank you. Move on to Mr. Singh and Mr. or Ms. Farman.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you. Can we have just one speaker, please?
Yes. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. My name is Hemant Shing, and I'm here with my wife, Masjid Farman, and both of us are owners of the property immediately to the south of this one, which is number 55 Atlas Avenue. And I believe we are the ones that are most detrimentally affected by the proposed development. We reviewed the plans, and you know, as some of the previous other neighbors had pointed out, the overall, you know, if you step back, and I'll actually subsequent to this, I'll actually send in photos of what the neighborhood looks like. We neglected to do that in the submission, and my apologies for that. So the proposed house, even though technically it's within the bylaw, you know, height limits and the existing setbacks, the way it is built is really massive. It will loom over all the other houses in the neighborhood and just be one of those mega McMansions. As you know, Ms. De Souza and Ms. Stevens have pointed out, it is in complete variance with the existing tone of the neighborhood. You know, all the houses in the neighborhood have front porches. It's a tightly knit community. We lived there with the family for 15 years. We raised four kids in the neighborhood, so we...you know, this is really, you know, a suburban-style McMansion development that doesn't at all fit in with the neighborhood. Specifically, there's a couple of, you know, specific points that we wanted to bring up. So first of all is, yes, it is within the, you know, the height of the building is within the allowed bylaw. What we are quite concerned about is that, you know, the house is, you know, getting on to 11 meters, which is the full height, and the third story, which right now is just shown as an unused attic, is a full 10 feet. So, you know, our concern is, why, you know, would you build such a massive attic if that is...and that with a dormer, if the plan is not to use it? So our feeling is that in the subsequent to this, they will, you know, pull the same stunt as what other developers have done and come back and make the third floor inhabitable. I mean, if it is not required, if the third floor is not required, they could have gone with a substantially lower roof and not even a flat roof, right? That's very doable. The related point to that is that, you know, the plans show an elevator in the building. Again, if it's a standard two-story house, I mean, why would you need an elevator, right? Basement for a second floor. I mean, our house is 100 years old, so all the other houses don't have an elevator. So again, the fact, the presence of an elevator, again, casts doubt on their plans of not...of leaving the attic as an unused space. So, you know, our feeling is that subsequent to this, you know, at a later stage, they'll come back and you'll go in the attic and make it usable. Now, specifically, the way, you know, the way this property will absolutely and detrimentally impact the usage of our property is very seen in the south elevation. If you could...if the chairman could move to the...I agree, the last page of the plans, that shows the southern elevation. Right, yeah, next one. So our...if you look at this, if you look at this, you know, our house, existing house kind of ends about a third of the way back from the proposed development. This is going to completely shade and obstruct our backyard. It is going to loom over our deck and the backyard. The window that is shown on the second floor, the three feet, six inches window, is going to be directly looking out down into our backyard and our deck and destroying our privacy. It's going to block all the sunlight and just basically put our house, put our deck and our backyard in permanent shade. The other issue we have is that the amount of glazing on the first floor, given the fact that, you know, this is the southern...the southern side of this house and the northern side of our house are barely, what I would say, a meter or so apart, given the, you know, how close they are to the property lines. That we believe is a serious fire hazard to have that amount of glazing so close to the property line. If you look at, again, if you look at the setbacks, you know, the, I think the owner's agent talked about the setbacks being within the...
Ten seconds, Mr. Singh.
...property line, but the amount of hard landscaping is also completely destroying the look and the feel of the neighborhood. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Singh?
Just a quick one, Chair. Mr. Singh, you mentioned that you...your home is south of the proposed...
Yes.
So you mentioned also that you're concerned about shadowing and sunlight.
That's correct.
But it's still a concern, given that you're south of the building?
Yes, actually, I should have sent photos, because basically, the way the sun comes, you know, we get the sun...our house faces east-west, right? So we get the sun in the morning and the afternoon, right? So that will...that will shade the house, and then also it will intrude in the sense of, you know, having this...right now, we have an open space at the back, and you can look out. This would actually completely box the northern edge of our property and our deck, and there's a privacy issues around the windows overlooking our deck and the backyard.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
All right, move on to Andrew Green.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. I'm...I live in 21 Normanna, which is the house directly east of 57 Atlas, and I would just echo many of the comments. I'm, you know, I think that the house is, you know, the proposed adjustments are large, you know, it's very large. I do agree. I feel like the third...the roof is set up, is being set up for a...as another apartment, and I feel that the, you know, the neighbors at 59 Atlas may not mind because their house is ginormous, but I think that this proposed renovation is out of character with the other houses. I'm worried about, you know, the size in terms of blocking the sun, so I'm directly east, and so as, you know, Mr. Singh had said, I'm worried about the effect in our backyard in terms of the lighting, and also just, you know, the addition on the...on each end. I mean, I'm more concerned about the proposed second-story addition on the second house, but does that more directly impacts us? But I...but I also, you know, it's striking when I look at that picture of the roof. You know, if it were a normal roof, I wouldn't have an issue with that, but it is clearly being set up for another apartment, and I just feel like it seems...it seems pretty high. Maybe it's still within code, but I'm still...I'm really more worried about the...that it's just not going to fit in. Yeah, I mean, when we see houses like that, whether it's 59 Atlas across the street, there's a sprinkling of these massive houses, and they're really out of character for the neighborhood.
All right.
And that's really it. I mean, everything else, you know, Mr. Singh and Shirley, like the other people in the neighborhood, I'm in agreement with them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Does any panel member have any questions of Mr. Green? No questions. All right, thank you, sir. We can go back to the applicant, please.
Hello?
Yes. Do you have...
Yes, I am here. So there's been a lot of discussion about this third story that's not part of this proposal and anticipated third story that's...that everybody is expecting to come on this house. There is no third story being proposed. The style of roof is being proposed because that is the design that my clients are...that they like, and in terms of the elevator, they're planning to grow...they're getting older, and they need...the stairs are becoming a problem for them, and that's why they're installing an elevator. Also, just to give you some technical background, they're doing...the proposed roof is being trussed, so we can't even place a third story on this in the future if that is the case. The reality is, is that this is a two-story home, and there was also discussions about that this is some sort of a mansion, a massive home. This house, in terms of growth floor area, is 2,206 square feet, but it's not massive by any means. It's a very modest form of intensification that's occurring on the property within a built form that is more than consistent with the existing area. The front yard setback, when you...if you could refer to the survey and on the site plan, what you see is, on the survey, you see that the front of the existing dwelling has an enclosed porch. That enclosed porch is consistent with the front yard setback that is being proposed, that's being proposed as part of this proposal, and is consistent with the neighboring dwelling at 55, so that does not change. So that 3.67 meter front yard setback will be maintaining the existing condition, and I would even submit that there's a porch, an enclosed porch that's being proposed as part of this proposal that would create less of amassing towards a street skate. Or with respect to height, once again, the proposal is in compliance with the overall building height. There is variances related to the front and rear main walls, but as indicated, that's just the technical nature of the styling of the roof. If the roof was of a different design, that main wall variance would not be there, and I would submit to you that in terms of shadowing and views and amassing, the overall height is the more...more of a better indicator in terms of that kind of impact that would be associated with the adjacent properties. And once again, there is no overall height variance that's being sought. With respect to the neighbor at 55 Atlas in terms of the portion of the building that will extend beyond the existing rear wall of his dwelling, well, I would submit to you that the proposed dwelling is at 17 meters, which is the permitted building length as a right, and none of the...that does not contravene the bylaw, and that is completely permitted within the bylaw, within the bylaw, and would be more than consistent with other homes in the area at 17 meters. Lastly, there was also mentions about fire hazards in between windows. Well, that is going to be reviewed through the building department, and fire code needs to be complied with. If there's any issues with regards to fire hazards because of openings between houses, that would have to be dealt with by either closing it up or placing fire shredder, whatever remediation that needs to occur. Once again, this is a very modest form of intensification at 2,200 square feet. It's not a mansion by a massive house in many...in any way. It's of a height... It's of a height, length and setbacks that complies with the existing conditions and with the existing characteristic of the pattern and development of the neighborhood. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Does the panel have any questions? No questions? Okay, we'll take it into committee. Do we have any comments or do we have a motion?
Well, I'll start, Chair. I understand and sympathize with some of the comments by the adjacent neighbors. Having said that, just looking at the mapping of this building, it is a unique corner lot. They aren't looking for variances for height or, or depth. It's just about setbacks, which are, for the most part, existing conditions. It, it seems reasonable to me and doesn't seem terribly inconsistent with what's going on in other parts of the neighborhood. I, I, what I heard a lot from the opposition was about the, you know, the concern about the third story. And it sounds like the agent has represented that there will be no accommodation in the third story. If we choose to approve this, I wonder if we could put a condition in it that aids and stipulates that. I don't know if that's the case or not, or whether that would be acceptable. But for me, this seems like a reasonable proposal.
I wouldn't mind jumping in. I, excuse me, I agree with everything that Mr. Clay has said. I was really trying to focus on, you know, what the height differential was going to be, but I'm satisfied that this isn't going to be too much larger, if it at all, than existing houses. We've heard that it will fit in. And I also want to note that it does meet the requirement for overall height of the, under the bylaw and it's a peaked roof. So it's, it's, I think, triggered because of the fact that it's a flat face to, to the peak. That's where it's triggering. So I am supportive of the application. The FSI is not, you know, great here, the increase being asked. And I'm satisfied that in terms of the front yard setback, that is an existing condition. The current house has an enclosed front porch and this is not gonna, the proposal's not going to change that situation in terms of blocking views and access, which has been something raised by the neighbors. So I'm supportive of the application myself.
Yeah, I, I have a comment to make. Yes, I agree with both of you, but I don't, I'm not agreeing on taking a condition in terms of the first floor because they're not actually applying for that and we do not know what the future will, will be. And just to limit the possibility, I don't think I will, I, I, I will support that. If we're going to move for, for approval, I will not put a condition on the first floor.
All right, do we have a motion?
I, I move for, move for approval. Are there any conditions? I don't think there are any conditions I, I need to-
No conditions? All right, do we have a second or without approval, without condition?
I'll second it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all in favor? All right, thank you, approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Number 935 La Salle's Boulevard. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition, a third story addition, a rear ground floor deck and a rear parking space. We have before us material submitted by the applicant, a report from Urban Forestry, correspondence in support from 20 Collin Avenue and opposition from 22 Collin, 109 Imperial Street, 31 and 33 La Salle's Boulevard and 16 Collin Avenue. Mr. Smith?
Morning, Mr. Chair. Jay Smith, agent for 35 La Salle's Boulevard.
Yes.
The application, as you stated, was to add a third floor addition. We have tried to be sympathetic to the neighborhood. The front slope of the roof will continue. It won't be visible from the street other than the increase in the roof height. The third floor addition is a space for one of the owners to work from home with a small balcony in order to get some light, to get some, you know, basically outdoor space. The rear addition, we originally submitted with a single slope roof to the north. After discussions with the neighbors at 109 Imperial, we have changed that to a gable roof to reduce that height, wall, wall height on the north side, which is sitting at 6.53 meters. There is a variance for the rear wall height. Again, it's to the center of the peak and the eaves on both sides, 6.53 meters. 109 Imperial does have a third floor, does have dormer spacing onto the side yard of 35 La Salle's Boulevard. So our height in asking for a third floor in the center of the building is not, you know, in keeping with what's immediately in the area. The FSI, I believe, at 0.68 is fairly minor compared to what is generally, seems to be approved lately. Building length is 18.9 and again, with what's being approved, you know, 19s, 20s, 22s, it's not, you know, out of the realm of being minor. The side wall or the side setback to the deck, variance number one, is an existing condition. Building depth is 0.06 over the allowable 19, so again, something I feel is minor. If there's any questions, please let me know.
All right, do any panel members have any questions of Mr. Smith? No questions, thank you, sir. Move on to Diana and Brad Reeson. Can we have just one of you speak, please?
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Diane Donat and I'm here with my husband, Brad Reeson. We live at 33 La Salle's Boulevard, which is the house directly to the south of 35 La Salle's. We are strong believers that change can be a good thing and we support our neighbors in their desire to enlarge their home for the family that they have started. We would just hope that the changes being done would be in keeping with the neighborhood's charm and character. You can see from the letters of objection that we are all longtime residents of the neighborhood. I've been here for over 26 years and it's clearly a place that we love and we're proud to call our home. All of us that are objecting have raised two or three children in our homes with more than enough space without having to go outside of the zoning bylaws in terms of length, height and bulk of our homes. We are confident that our neighbors could find a solution to their renovation that still provides sufficient space for their growing family while still satisfying the bylaw parameters. We strongly feel that bylaws are created for a reason and that there is careful thought and process in creating them. They are designed to preserve the integrity of a neighborhood. We believe that zoning bylaws should not be broken and that by breaking them, it sets the precedent for others to follow suit and continue to detract from the neighborhood we love until it becomes unrecognizable. Sometimes we want things that we just can't have. In doing our extensive renovation five years ago, we stuck to the footprint of our home, not only to maintain our neighborhood's beauty, but also with our neighbors' enjoyment of their own homes and backyards in mind. When you hear from the others, what you will hear is that we are all most concerned with the height of the proposed addition. We do not consider this variance to be minor. We also do not understand why it's necessary to have a balcony on the third floor, which would directly peer over our back deck and would be an invasion of our privacy, making us feel uncomfortable and exposed. In speaking to our neighbor, he told us it's for the purpose of a fire escape, but we would recommend this being amended to a dormer. In terms of the proposed length of the house becoming 18.9 meters, this again is 1.9 meters, over six feet over what is permitted by the bylaw. Our understanding is that if you exceed length, that it is permitted on the ground floor only. If this variance is allowed, again, it will negatively affect our back deck, our backyard and our swimming pool. It will definitely cause shadowing and limit sunshine in our yard as well as others in the neighborhood. Ultimately, it will negatively affect the enjoyment of our home. The proposed length of the addition will also necessitate the removal of one of the largest, most beautiful, mature trees in our neighborhood and we're not clear if Mr. Wong already has a permit to do so. Again, I just wanted to say that we are not opposed to change, but would appreciate if the change did not deviate from the neighborhood character and more importantly, stay within the zoning bylaws. I'd like to close by emphasizing that this whole process has been extremely time-consuming and stressful. If there are bylaws in place, why should people get away with breaking them? We have all learned during the COVID-19 pandemic that bylaws are put in place to protect. These bylaws are created out of necessity and after careful thought. The process as it stands has the potential to create unwanted tensions between neighbors, which I think is a really bad precedent. We want our neighbors to enjoy their home, but not at the expense of taking away enjoyment of the other homes in the neighborhood. I thank you for your consideration.
All right, do any panel members have any questions? No questions? Okay, let's move on to Mr. and Mrs. Edmison.
Mr. Edmison speaking. Can you hear me? Hello?
I think you should speak-
Can you hear me?
Well, not very clearly. Please speak up.
Hello, it's, it, okay, I'm sorry, I am in the car now because on my, on my mobile, yes, I am objecting to the height restrictions or that the violations of the height on this house with the, the style of the roof that they have put in with the flat roof and then the adjoining peach roof and concerned about the, except the height of the home and how that detracts from the other homes on the street. We have a very short street. There are only four homes that adding on to La Salle's, running on to La Salle's Boulevard and this is a home that will not blend into the other homes in, with this renovation. So the height is my primary restriction and then also the two doors south will definitely be looking into the protruding two-story addition and the subsequent balcony.
All right.
I hope you, that you did hear that, I could be in a dead zone.
All right, does any-
Hello?
Yeah, are you, is that, are those your points?
Yes.
All right, does any panel member have any questions? No questions? Okay, let us move on now to Barbara Henders. Ms. Henders, is she there?
Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, sorry about that. Hi, yeah, I'm Barbara Henders. I live at 109 Imperial Street, which is the house just to the north of the proposed renovation. And I, I echo what Diane said. We, we, you know, we totally appreciate that they want to renovate their house and we're, we're asking that they do it in a way that's more consistent with the character of the neighborhood and more respectful of our sun, our views and our privacy. If I can focus on that addition, yeah, we do have a third floor on our house, but it is tucked within the roof and it has charming dormers on the outside, which is all that someone can see and I think it adds to the character of the neighborhood. What they're proposing is a box third floor that will block our views. We have problems already with freezing on the south side of our house on the pipes. The, the guy who came to fix it said that that will be exasperated by that because I'll lose the sun on there. But the aesthetics of what they're suggesting are simply not in keeping with the neighborhood. This idea of having a box and then a balcony and then a different roof in a discontinuous manner, we will be able to see that from our house, from our yard. You'll be able to see that walking down Imperial Street. So it will make a difference to the character. I also worry, as do the neighbors to the south, about that balcony and privacy. They won't be able to look out from the balcony. They will have to look into our yard and the yard to the south. The back extension, that will go past our, our current house. We will be able to see that from the windows. It will go up two levels despite, you know, the, the zoning 10.20, 0.40, 0.20, saying you can only go past the 17 if it's at one story and less than 50% of the house, et cetera. So I, I'm concerned about that as well, blocking our views, privacy. Their, their deck will therefore be in the middle of my backyard. So there are concerns there. I wanted to point out some discrepancies in there that they have, they have, if you look onto their plan, on their second floor, bedroom floor, they have a window in that plan and that does not show up on the elevation. On the first floor, can you see what I mean? That window, you just were there, yeah. The window in bedroom floor, which is in the middle, that window does not show up on the elevation. If you go down to the first floor, they have a mudroom with a door that would open up into the area between our houses. That does not show up on the elevation. Both of those are issues around privacy, I would imagine. And then if you look at the window by the bathroom on the first floor, they have indicated that that will go into a small window. That does not show up on the elevation either. They retain the charming, original window on the elevation, but what they are proposing is something that will be much less in keeping with the character of, of the neighborhood. So there are inconsistencies in that plan. I don't know if I caught them all, but I think that it does need to be reviewed for that. The tree in the backyard is a neighborhood gem. We all love that tree and, and I hope that the forestry people take a good look at it. So, so those are my comments. We've, you know, we love the neighborhood, we want them to be able to renovate. I don't think they're quite understanding the impact of what they're doing and how far out it is from the character of the neighborhood. We'd like them to look at that and, and, you know, perhaps come up with a plan that is, is in more keeping with the neighborhood and the height requirements, privacy, et cetera. Thank you.
All right, do any panel members have any questions of Ms. Henders? No questions? Okay, move on to Elizabeth Trotter.
Through you, Mr. Chair. She's not in the WebEx waiting room right now, so perhaps we can move on to the other speakers and then we can give her a call.
Move on to David Cape.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning and thank you to the committee for hearing and considering our objections to the proposal in front of us. My name is Niko Cape and along with my family, I live at 16 Collin Avenue. Our property backyard, I guess, is diagonally adjacent to, diagonally adjacent, excuse me, to 35 La Salle's where the sun sets behind, so will definitely be impacted by what happens on this property. As we stated in our letter of rejection, which we submitted to the committee, we've been living at 16 Collin Avenue for about 17 years. In fact, we did a renovation of our own about three years after we moved in, where we kept the front and side facades and did not go to this committee because we had no variances from the zoning bylaws. And we did this for two reasons. One, we did not want to upset our neighbors. We had just moved into the neighborhood three years before, as I mentioned. And we really didn't want to change the look and feel of the beautiful neighborhood, which a couple of objectors have noted, which is known for its wonderful greenery and tree properties. I know there's a number of variances- I know there's a number of variances that are proposed here, but most egregious, as has been brought before, in our opinion, is to increase the maximum seven meters in height to a proposed nine meters, which to us is a huge increase and a very dangerous precedent for our neighborhood. I know the applicant has put in four height precedents that have been cited. We would argue that two of them, specifically 17 Wilberton and 729 Avenue, Avenue Road, are not comparable, as they have maximum allowable heights of 8.5 meters and 7.5 meters respectively, not the seven meters as is the case here. So the direct comparables, in our opinion, to 35 LaSalle's are the ones that do in fact have 17-meter maximum allowable heights, notably 62 Eastbourne and 81 Cullen Avenue. And they were allowed to have minor variances by this committee to just 7.4 and 7.3 meters respectively. So nothing close to what's being proposed here of nine meters. We'd like to add also that we believe the variances should not be looked at separately, which as the applicant has suggested, each are minor in their own right, but should be looked at in their totality. When you consider 29% height variance of the scope and a 13% increase in the density, we think the variance ends up being not just additive, but a geometric variance, meaning you have to multiply one by the other, which really becomes impactful on the neighborhood. And then finally, committee members, I would just suggest that during this time that we've had an extreme period of heat, that we should all consider the long-term impact of this project on climate change, which is the increased density at the expense, as Barbara just mentioned, an incredibly beautiful and large tree that will be sacrificed as a result of this project. The sun sets right through that tree for us, and so we see it every evening from our backyard. It is one of the most beautiful private trees on our block. We've had many city trees that are over 40 feet in height that are slowly dying as they are being brought down by the city because they need to be. Many neighbors have been replacing these with new trees of their own on the boulevards that exist on both LaSalle's and our street. We in fact had to do that three years ago, but, you know, our new tree is only probably four meters in height at this point. So taking down this amazing, what I estimate is probably a 12-meter tree that provides a huge natural canopy for all the neighbors around it will be a monumental loss for the look and feel of our neighborhood. So thank you for your considerations of our objections. That's all I have to say.
All right. Does... Do any panel members have any questions of Mr. Cape? No questions? All right, move on to... Do we have Ms. Trotter? No. Dorothy Luffin?
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Dorothy Luffin, and I live with my family at 22 Cullen. We've been here for 19 years. I am in a... We are adjacent backyard neighbors to 35 LaSalle. And I'm here to support the immediate neighbors to 35 LaSalle and also the look and feel of our neighborhood. And we have just a few concerns about the proposed variances for 35 LaSalle. And they're largely centered on the proposed height and length and the potential impact on the tree that's been mentioned already. Basically, the proposed building is too long and too tall with the 18.9-meter proposed length and the nine-meter high at the rear peak proposed height. And at that height and length, it's going to... We're worried that it's going to loom over the neighboring yards and will impose on neighbors' privacy. And we don't think that's fair for the immediate neighbors, nor is it aligned with the character of the neighborhood. We believe that the reno can be very beautiful and align with the height and length bylaws. And finally, we do also hope that that tree, that beautiful mature tree in the backyard, won't be impacted by the reno. Our neighborhood has already lost quite a few trees, mature trees, over the past five to 10 years. So those are our key concerns. Thank you.
All right. Do any panel members have any questions? No questions? All right. Do we have Ms. Trotter?
No, we do not, Mr. Chair, but we can try giving her a call through WebEx.
Okay.
Do you want to do that?
So I think that we should not try and call her, but not delay. I think we should go back to the applicant and hear his rebuttal. Sounds to me that everybody that's spoken has the same concerns. So Mr. Smith, we hear some rebuttal from you.
Are you able to do a call? I can call. I can try calling her first, or...
Are you able to call and have him speak at the same time?
I would have to call Elizabeth Trotter.
Yeah. Let's just have...
All right. Let's... All right, call her, let's see.
Fortunately, it's not that forgiving a process.
Hi, Ms. Trotter, are you there?
At the tone, please record your message. To leave a call back...
All right. Mr. Smith?
Neighbor's concerns. To deal with the tree first, any addition to the house, unfortunately, even an addition as of right, will impact the tree, just given its current location. So if we build with no committee decision, we still have to deal with that. An application was filed with forestry before December, and we had discussion with forestry on this, so that is already in process. I would like to remove variance number one, which is the side yard setback to the deck. Variance two will stay. Variance three, the rear wall height, again, that is to...
Just a minute, sir.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think we missed the first part of Mr. Smith's presentation, and the committee, we're not in the position to accept substantial revisions because there's no opportunity to file plans. I think at this point, the committee needs to decide whether or not they're going to be proceeding with the application as submitted, or after all that time, I guess, whether or not you're interested in entertaining a deferral.
All right. Mr. Smith, we've already heard from the opposition. I don't thi... I mean, if you were going to make some changes that we may or may not have entertained with respect to the variances, I think you should have made them at the outset, so...
No, they should have been made before the notice.
Or even before, with respect to the notice.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So applicant understands that virtual hearings are not as forgiving as in person. We are only scheduling applications that are perfected and ready to go to hearing for a decision. If there were to be revisions, they should have been submitted before the notice of public hearing went out.
All right. So...
So I don't know what you want to do.
All right. Mr. Smith, we're not going to entertain revisions at this point, so...
I understand, Mr. Chair, and, you know, like Mr. Secretary of Chargers said, yes, I am used to the old... Old system where we could make changes and reduce variances in front of the committee. If that's not allowed, then I would kindly request a deferral at this time.
You would request the what?
A deferral, sir. So that we can make the changes and that we can, you know, deal with the concerns of the neighbors.
Why didn't they do that?
Yeah. Well, all those concerns were expressed, and...
The application was filed last year.
Yeah. All the neighbors' concerns were expressed in writing, so... And it's... All right. Anyways, that's... You're requesting a deferral?
Not the members.
Pardon?
The members need to try and...
Members, yeah.
Need to decide whether or not they want to take or if they should go to...
So, panel, are you prepared to proceed with the application, decide the matter, or to prepare to entertain a request for a deferral, which means we now have to go to the opposition and canvass them with respect to a deferral, too? I mean, it's kind of late in the day to request a deferral.
Mr. Through you, Mr. Chair, are these going to be significant changes? I mean, we just spent... I don't know how much time we've just spent on this application. It seems like a fair bit. I agree it's late in the day for a deferral request. It's unfortunate the applicant didn't speak to all the neighbors who've taken time to sit on the phone and wait for this application to be heard. If we're just talking about the deck or something like that, I don't know. I mean, the bulk of the complaints, as far as I'm concerned, relate to the height, so I'm not even sure deferral would address that issue.
Mr. Smith, could you just tell us what... Briefly, what changes you would like to make?
We would reduce the height. We are in overall height, we do meet the bylaw. We would reduce the rear wall height. We would absolutely drop the depth. We would reduce the depth of the house and remove variance number six. We remove variance number one. Number five would be reduced, and the GFA or DFSI would be reduced as well. We would make changes for this. We have canvassed the neighbors. The owners have talked to the neighbors multiple times, trying to come up with something that would fit what you were requesting, as well as what the owners were hoping to do. So we have spent a lot of time, including doing the 3D rendering that I sent in, that was sent to the neighbors in order for them to understand the massing of the addition that we're proposing.
Well, all these matters seem to have been known before. If you were going to ask for a deferral, or if you were going to change things, it seemed to me you should have done it before today. So, panel, are we prepared to consider a deferral, or do we want to just deal with the application today?
Chair, what I heard the applicant say was that there were going to be some changes to the depth and the height, which is the two, I think, major things the opponents are concerned about. Frankly, we have spent like half an hour on this one, so I'd hate to defer it because I'd like to hear what changes are being proposed.
But it sounds like we're going to need revised plans or something.
Through you, Mr. Chair, there's a number of...
So, yeah, what... Can we just refresh our memories what the process would be?
Well, given the interest in the application, I don't think that the provisions that have been noted by the agent are minor enough to be done on the fly at a public hearing. The neighbors have some concerns also about how it's going to look, and without plans, they won't have an opportunity to address any other concerns that they might have.
Okay, thank you, fair enough.
Yeah. It was... This was filed in December.
Seems to me that we either agree to a deferral, or we deal with the application, and the applicant can revise his plans and bring a new application if we don't defer it.
Through you, Mr. Chair, can we maybe ask the, well, the immediate neighbors, which would be 33 LaSalle's and 31 LaSalle's, whether or not they are interested in a deferral?
Okay. Can we connect with Diane Donath?
I'm sorry, I don't understand what a deferral means.
Through you, Mr. Chair, it means that the applicant is now willing to meet with neighbors and listen to your concerns and make revisions to the variances.
But it means that the application is going to be put off for at least three months while those changes are made, likely longer than three months.
I mean, if that's the best scenario, but we have been telling them about our opposition from the beginning for many months.
We understand that, and I don't disagree with that, that we've indicated to Mr. Smith he should have brought his changes before the hearing date.
Is she for or against?
Yeah. So would you be in favor of a deferral, or do you want us to deal with the application as is today?
Well, they do need a... They do want a renovation, so if they're willing to conform to the variances, then and the new plans indicate that, then we're in favor of a deferral.
Well, I can't guarantee that they're going to be prepared to conform to the bylaws, but that's what the committee of adjustments for, to make some minor variances. So... But they're prepared to change...
So we will go through this process again? Is that what you're saying? Can Barbara speak? Barbara Henders, to the north?
Yeah, okay. Let's hear from Barbara Henders.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. I basically agree with, you know, Diane's points in that I totally respect the fact that they want to do a renovation. And I'd love it if they can come back with a plan that meets everybody's needs. I don't understand really the difference between having a deferral and coming back or making a decision, and then they resubmit if you choose not to accept what they're presenting today. So, I mean, I guess a deferral is probably easiest. If a deferral is easiest for you, it seems like the same amount of work for us, so does it make any difference?
Yeah, it makes a difference because if they have to reapply, they got to start all over again and pay a larger fee than if there's a deferral.
Well, then it... But otherwise, this process is the same again?
Yes.
They... It would come back, so... Yeah. I'm fine with the deferral if it's easier for them, and if we have the same rights and we get the same hearing within it, then that makes sense if it's easier for them.
All right. I think we should check with Edmison, 31 LaSalle's.
Through you, Mr. Chair, they are no longer in the...
I don't find it... It's up to the committee members.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I've lost signal. Oh, there they are, but they're not on my screen. Okay. So panel members, are you in favor of a deferral, or are you in favor of dealing with the application? I can't hear you. You're muted.
Are this the room you... Everybody's on mute, we lose connection. Remember that happened?
No, they're blinking.
Hey, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, I prefer to go ahead with the application.
Okay.
I mean, I guess when we see requests for a deferral, if we approve or refuse, if we refuse it, they would resubmit. If we agree to a deferral, they resubmit. So I'm kind of at a loss as to what the best process would be. Lisa, you know this stuff.
I'm on the fence with the deferral as well. I think the agent should know that deferral at this late stage, we've spent a ton of time... time on this, we've had a number of neighbors oppose the application, and, you know, I hate to defer something without significant changes coming back. I'm not supportive of the application in its current state, so, you know, I'd like to see some significant revisions. I'm prepared to deal with it today as well, if the rest of the panel wants to do that. But as it currently stands, I'm not in favor of it. I don't know what the applicant would then do, if they would, you know, appeal our decision, if we refuse it, or if it makes more sense for them. I'd like to see the neighbors and the applicant work together and figure this one out, to be honest. But there's no guarantee that's going to happen with a deferral, I don't know.
So, can I just ask a technical question in terms of clarification? So if we deal with it now, do, can we entertain the changes that the agent is proposing? No, we have to deal with it as submitted.
Well, the.
Yes, this.
Changes sound too extensive, and changes, and you have to change the plans, et cetera, and we've indicated we don't do that, particularly at a virtual hearing. So we either deal with it as is, or we defer it.
Well, I'm hearing two people say that they would like to deal with it as is.
Oh, sorry, Larry, can I interrupt?
Please.
Given what Lisa just said, she already expressed her stance on it, or decision on it, I don't think it's fair that we will go ahead and listen, because it means that she already got a decision as the current application. So what, the deferral is not going to make much, if you do not grant them a deferral, they will not have a chance to make revision, right? So given what she said, I will retract what I said, I would prefer a deferral now, given the application and another chance to work with the neighborhood.
So, do we have a motion? Do you want to make a motion, Yim, for deferral?
Yes, yes, I would like to make a motion for a deferral, at the maximum of three months, or I have to say that.
The deferral is a minimum of three months and probably longer.
Oh, now it's the minimum?
Within three months, we want some indication of how things are going, but it probably, or it'll be the first available hearing date, and I can't tell you when that will be, because we don't have dates beyond August.
Okay, so my motion just to, okay.
Motion is what, Yim?
I've got it, it's fine.
Okay, do we have a second there for the motion for a deferral?
Well, I'll bring it to a vote, so I'll second it.
All right, all in favor of deferral? All right, we have, you have a deferral, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, next application, 94 and 96 Helena Avenue. And the purpose of these applications is to construct a, well, first of all, yeah, to construct a new three-story detached house with rear decks on the first, second, and third floors, and a rear two-story ancillary building containing a laneway suite on the second floor, and also, an application has been made with respect to a consent application, which is with respect to rights of way, but I understand that's been refused. So we're just dealing with the construction of two three-story detached houses with a laneway house on these two lots, 94 and 96 Helena Avenue. And we have before us today materials submitted by the applicant, a correspondence from engineering and urban forestry, reports from engineering and urban forestry, we have a four-signature petition in support from 101, 102, 103, 107, and 109 Helena Avenue, we have opposition from 85 Hawken, 80 Helena, 100 Helena, and an eight petitions, eight signature petitions in opposition from 86, 88, 90, and 109 Helena Avenue. Can we go ahead with Vanessa Fong?
Hi.
Hi.
Hello, hi, how's it going? My name is Vanessa Fong, architect and agent for the owner. Just prior to starting the presentation, if, I, we did submit a five-slide presentation for the purposes of talking through the variances, if that could be pulled up, would be appreciated. And I guess while that's pulled up, so I'll talk to 94 Helena first, and the variances for 94 and 96 are quite similar, 96 Helena just has one less variant, but the design of the two houses, two detached houses and laneway suites are pretty much mirror images of each other. So we, the four variances for 94 are as follows, the first one is soft landscaping, if we can go to the next slide, please, that's just the existing condition. Soft landscaping, we are asking for 51.54%, where allowable is 85%. During pre-circulation, we did work with the planner and specifically engineering through the process, and we did come to the conclusion of adding a laneway suite green roof, the green roof on top of the laneway suite to help basically mitigate the water runoff, which is the intent of the percentage of soft landscaping. So although the additional green roof doesn't technically add to the percentage of soft landscaping, it does satisfy the intent of the bylaw, and through correspondence, which is in the package, engineering did say they were satisfied with that change, which we would move forward with. The second variant is building depth, where we are requesting 18.3 meters, if we can go to the next slide, please, where the allowable is 17, and that's due to a bump out at the rear, so at the rear of the main house where the dotted line is, that's the extent of the ground floor. So that additional bump out just allows a back door access, so that it can access through the side and not, I guess, directly into the living room, which is at the rear, and it is only sort of a third of the width of the total house, it's not the full width of the house, the additional depth. The third variant is floor space index, where we are requesting .86 in an area that's allowed .6. If we go to the next slide, there have been previously approved lots in this area, which are indicated in blue in this slide, and our subject sites are in red, and the ones approved, these are just CFA decisions in the area for .86 and higher. And typically, for lots of this size, if any house is three stories or two and a half with a habitable attic space, it usually triggers an FSI of approximately this much, so I think we are in keeping with the neighborhood. And the fourth variant, which is only on 94, 96 does not have this variant, is for a front yard setback. Because we are building the two houses together, we've aligned the front facades of these two houses, which would be still in line with the neighboring houses in 92 and 98, which on either side of these two subject sites, and so that they would still fit in contextually to the streetscape, but because of the way 92 and 98 are staggered, and the staggered setback is an average of the two neighbors, we would still fall in line and fit in contextually. I just also wanted to note that throughout the process, you know, we have been working with engineering, as previously noted, and also urban forestry. We actually reached out to urban forestry prior to the actual committee of adjustment submission, back in the fall of 2019, just to ensure that they were satisfied with the direction that we were taking with the subject site, and I think there is correspondence on file that they are satisfied, and that obviously we would have to still go through the normal application process for approval for removal of trees, but they have said that they are okay with that. We have also worked with the neighbors to the best of our abilities, and have reached out to many of them. In the past sort of week and a half, or two weeks, we have directly spoken to neighbors at 100 Helena, 92, and 80 Helena as well. I understand there's a number of letters of objection, and to sort of summarize their concerns, there was the concern about fire flow and sewer capacity, which engineering has not pointed out as a concern through our conversations, and obviously, at the building permit stage, we would not address any concerns that pertain to that. Soft landscaping was a concern, which, again, we have worked with engineer to satisfy through the addition of the green roof and privacy.
Ms. Fong, your time is up, if you could just wrap up?
Okay, I guess just the next slide, just in terms of privacy from the laneway suite, allowable is 10.5 meters from the rear yard, we are actually giving 10.69 meters, so, which is the bylaw that allows for privacy, so we actually, architect actually giving a larger setback to the rear of the house, and I think, just in conclusion, I think the variances, we've worked with intent and the purpose of the bylaw and official plan, and believe that the variances are in fact of minor nature.
Thank you. Does any panel members have any questions?
Yes, I have one, Ms. Fong. Can you tell me, can you tell me the impact to the application when now we know that the consent, the application for the consent is denied or refused? What kind of impact it will be on this?
Yes, yeah, I can speak to that. So, when we made the initial application for committee of adjustment, the limiting distance agreement that is now in place for sharing the easement for fire emergency access was not in place at that time. We literally made the application to committee, and I think it was like the next week that limiting distance agreement had come out, so that's why we had applied for an easement between the two properties to allow for fire and emergency access. So even though the consent application was refused, we do have the opportunity to use the LDA agreement with the two properties and the city to provide emergency access, so that shouldn't impact the design and intent we have.
Oh, thank you, that's good explanation, thank you.
Any further questions?
So, excuse me, just to clarify then, Ms. Fong, in terms of the engineering conditions and the requirement for the emergency access on the minor variants, in terms of the one-meter-wide private walkway, you'll be able to satisfy those conditions?
Yes, we've actually provided between the two houses 1.2 meters, so slightly wider than what is required, and then we would enter into that LDA agreement between the two subject sites and the city to allow emergency access.
Thank you.
And you've got enough room in the laneway for emergency vehicles?
Because we have the 1.2 meter, or over one meter wide access from the street, that would be their route for emergency access.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, we move on to Maria Casetos.
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, good morning, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. My name is Maria Casetos, I reside at 88 Helena Avenue, and I also speak on behalf of the residents of 190, 88, 86, and 109 Helena, who also retracted their variants of the earlier signage of the letter submitted to the Committee of Adjustments on July 7. Due to the online format of this meeting, and due to the short window of opportunity to this application, it means that some of the neighbors, including our counselor, Josh Mottler, were unable to submit additional letters of concerns in the opposition of the committee to adjustment. The impacts of the current proposal of the redevelopment of 94 and 96 Helena relates to the density being proposed and the lack of the soft ground landscape available relative to the size of the very small lots. The impacts of the development of the properties will impact our quality of life, and it does not fit with the physical character of the neighborhood. Due to the reduced soft ground landscape, removal of several mature trees, which will have a detrimental impact to the environment, as it will deprive the neighbor, nearby neighbors of shade, and more importantly, privacy, it's also structure protruding well beyond the maximum permitted floor space index of a detached house, which is 0.60 times the area of the lot, 160.84 meters. The proposal for 94 Helena is 0.86 times the area of the lot, 230.89 meters square. And for 96 Helena, it's even bigger, due to having a closet built outside of the rear of the house, adding an additional six feet, two and a half inches in length, with a second, third store balconies on both homes. We believe that in the past, the COA would do a drive-by of the affected properties, it's my understanding, this is what's not done, to give, is done to give a feel of the neighborhood. Before rendering a decision due to COVID, this is impossible, a decision based on surveys, reports, and renderings does not give an accurate appraisal of front and rear streetscapes. The existing fabric of the neighborhood would be impacted, we understand that providing additional housing types in neighborhoods is a plus, and combined massing of a primary and auxiliary structure is being proposed far exceeds what is appropriate on 20-foot-wide lots. The maximum of 85% of the area between the rear main wall of the residential building and the front main wall of the auxiliary building containing a laneway suite must be for soft ground landscaping. We feel that the proposed variance of only 51.54% of soft ground landscaping, a significant reduction of nearby 40% of the requisite soft landscaping, while adversely impacting neighborhood water flow and the absorption of runoff from the auxiliary structures, a situation that raises important questions around zoning and infrastructure that do not appear to be adequately addressed by these applications. In addition, under the Laneway Suites Planning Act of in Shaping the City, Section 2.3 in Healthy Neighborhoods, development within neighborhoods will be consistent with this objective and will respect the resilient, reinforce the existing physical character of building streetscapes and open space patterns in these areas. Any physical changes to establish neighborhoods must be sensitive, gradual, and generally fit the existing physical character. A key objective of the official plan is that renewed development respects reinforced and general physical patterns in a neighborhood, which we believe they are not. The official plan lists a series of development criteria for new development in neighborhoods. The criteria is intended to guide new development to respect and reinforce the existing physical character of the neighborhood, including prevailing building types, heights, massing scale, and dwelling type in nearby residential properties, and prevailing patterns of rear and side yard setbacks amongst others. The current proposal of the Laneway Suites, we feel, does not take into consideration any respective guidelines that reflect in the policies planned with respect to healthy neighbors and the neighborhood's land use designation. The impacts of the Laneway Suites are invasive and only 40 feet from the rear of the existing houses, with a south-facing window on the second floor where main bedrooms are located section of precedence on Helena Avenue. If these variances are approved, this proposal can set a precedent for future applications, as this application was submitted as a minor variances, it goes well beyond the limits of the zoning bylaws in place, and if you approve this application, we feel that eventually structures will be allowed to be built on the entire 20-foot-wide lots, reaching from the sidewalks to the rear laneway. I thank you for your time and listening to our opposition.
All right, Ms. Casetos, would you, if the laneway houses were eliminated, would you be in favor of this application?
We are not suggesting that laneway housing be eliminated, we would like it to be within the current footprint of the garages and backyard setbacks. And the second rear window facing south into the houses currently, due to the proximity, is an issue, and we would look to have something there, like an opaque window.
All right, does anyone else have any questions? Oh, Larry? No questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fong?
Hello? Hi.
Hi.
Just to maybe speak to Maria's concerns?
Yes. Yes.
And we realize, you know, there is a densification on this site, but I do think that we are sort of following the official plan in terms of gentle densification. The main house is still a single-family home, and it is the addition of the laneway suite that would add density, but not in a different way as having a basement apartment would in the main house. The laneway suite itself is in keeping with all the bylaws surrounding a laneway suite. There are no variances that are triggered by the laneway suite itself. Concern regarding the softscaping, really, if we look at the site plan, if we were just to remove the rear deck, the sort of 10-foot deck off the main back wall of the main suite, we would be at the 85%. But however, because of the grade, we do need a deck in order to mitigate the change in floor elevation from the ground floor down to the garden. There are still over 10 meters in sort of backyard space between the rear of the main house and to the laneway suite, and so, which is sort of typical in this area. So the percentage of landscaping, you know, could be achieved, but the idea to have a rear deck is so that, you know, there could be furniture placement, and the main house could use the enjoyment of the rear space, of the backyard space. In addition, just in terms of privacy, we have designed the laneway suite to mitigate privacy in window placements. So the facade that overlooks the backyard, which I believe is in the drawing package, the window that faces the backyard is actually, starts at 5.6 feet high. So it's not a window that comes down to, you know, countertop height or down to the floor level. It starts at 5.6 feet high. And in addition, so it's more like a clear-story window. And in addition, the stairwell that runs up to the second floor runs along this back facade. So anybody in the laneway suite and standing in the laneway suite, the closest they could get to this window is sort of three and a half feet away from the window because of the stair location. And so that prevents any sort of scenario where they could kind of like peer through the window due to its height and due to its location within the floor plate. So we have really carefully considered that architecturally when designing, because we understand privacy and the need for privacy, and really, the windows look out to the laneway side more so than the backyard side. With the design and placement of the main houses, we've maintained setbacks that are typical, backyard setbacks that are typical of this neighborhood. And we have maintained the front yard setback that is typical within this neighborhood. So we believe that we are in keeping with the streetscape. And, you know, as previously noted, we have worked with engineering to deal with any concerns with water runoff with the addition of the green roof.
Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Fong?
Chair, just a quick one. So the two laneway suites, are they detached or semi-detached?
The laneway suites are attached, I guess you could say, because you are allowed to build lot line to lot line for laneway suites. There isn't a requirement for any side yard setbacks.
No, I get that. I was just trying to clarify, just for the sake of massing.
Okay, yeah. So I guess for the sake of massing, they are attached.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Fong. We're going into... Yeah, we're dealing with both. I would support these applications. I lived and walked by the, I lived nearby, walked by these houses twice a week at least. That end of Helena has been substantially redeveloped. There are, I don't know, I would say at least 40% of the houses at that end of the street are now three-story townhouses, new ones. There's one down the street to the east on the same side of the street as this one, of these two. That's a monstrosity. It's huge. So this would have, in my opinion, having regard to what else has been going on there recently, no impact at all. The only difference is that these have laneway suites, but it's a laneway that's full of garages. So these laneway suites are not going to make a substantial difference, because the garages are all contiguous. The only thing that's going to happen is it's going to be a better-looking building than the existing garages. So I would be in support of this application.
I'd like to make some comment. So I'm in agreement with, what did I say? But also, I can sense that the proposals actually trying very hard and with a lot of sensitivity to mitigate the hostility of this structure, especially that the main house is actually stuck back to the backyard. And also with the laneway suites, they do not need any variances. That is a great achievement. And also, I also agree that she has actually put a stair in the, on the side facing the main house, between the main house, the main house and the main house. That is actually a great softer privacy problem. And I'm sort of in favor of this development.
Any further comments, or do we have?
Yeah, no, I just echo all that. I agree with everything you guys have said. I did sort of take a little look at the rest of the street, and Chair, I would agree, there's been a substantial amount of redevelopment on that street. Not all of it necessarily attractive, I don't disagree, but I think this is a street in transition, and this is a continuation of that, and I would support the laneway housing as well.
Lisa, do you have any comments, or can we move to a motion?
I think we can move to a motion.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So I can make, I'm going to make a motion to approve the, first of all, the consent part of it. Also move 94 and 96 Helena Street.
No, we're not, I didn't understand what you said, Yim. Did you say that you're dealing with a consent? That's already been dealt with.
That's been, oh, I see. We don't need to, okay. So I will move a motion to approve both 94 and 96 Helena Avenue. Are there any conditions?
Forestry, condition number two.
Yeah, forestry number two.
And the engineer, and engineering has conditions too.
Yes, and also, they have to also meet all the regulations for laneway suites.
Yeah, that's the engineering condition.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So your motion is to approve both applications, subject to urban forestry number two and the engineering conditions. Do we have a secondary?
Yes.
Larry? All in favor? Have your approval. Thank you. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a second-story addition and rear ground floor deck. And with this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, support from 25 Westover, and two form letters from 23, 21, and 24 Westover. Aaron Idoin? Yes.
Okay, making sure you can hear me.
Yeah, could we just have your name and?
Sure. So my name is Aaron Idoin. I am the designer and applicant for a second-story addition at 22 Westover Hill.
Okay, we just, I just want to check with my panel to see if we need a presentation. Panel, does anyone need a presentation?
No.
No, we don't need a presentation. Thank you. We'll go into committee. Do we have any comments, or do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I am in support of this application. I, it's a second story, and then there's a rear ground floor addition. I've reviewed all the materials. I am in support. I think it's in keeping with what's going on, and it meets the four tests in my view. I don't know how my colleagues feel, but...
Do we have a secondary?
I will second it.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't see you.
So they both seconded it, so all in favor?
Sorry.
All in favor? All right.
So I brought the motion forward, yes.
Application approved. Thank you. 531 Arlington Avenue. Purpose of this application is to construct a one-story ancillary building with a basement in the rear yard of the two-story detached house. The ancillary structure, including the basement level, will be used as storage. Well, let me just go over this again, because I don't think I got it right, or it isn't right. To construct a one-story ancillary building with a basement, okay. In the rear yard of the two-story detached house. Ancillary structure, including the basement level, will be used as storage. Okay, now I understand. All right, so along with this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, correspondence from Urban Forestry and Conservation Authority, staff reports from Urban Forestry and Ravine and Natural Features, and we have Marco Viera. Sir?
Hi, good afternoon, committee and members of the panel. My name is Marco Viera. I'm the agent and the designer for this application.
Okay, I just want to, I don't think we're going to need a presentation. I want to canvass my panel. Does anyone need a presentation on this matter? No.
Not me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Viera. We're going into committee. Does anyone have comments or questions, or do you want to bring a motion?
I'm fine with this. It appears to have gone through a lot of regulatory streams, Conservation Authority, Ravine. Everyone seems to be fine with this one. Urban Forestry does have a condition, or?
Yes.
Urban Forestry has conditions, so I, this has already been through committee to approve the dwelling. This appears to be a reasonable addition to the existing dwelling, so I'm supportive of it.
All right, subject to forestry condition number two. Yim, you second it? Okay, all in favor? All in favor? Application approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
All right. Next application is 222 Monroe Street, and the purpose of this application is to alter the existing three-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear second-story addition, a third-story addition, and a front basement walkout. We have the forest material submitted by the applicant, reports from planning and Urban Forestry, and correspondence and support from 22, 220 Monroe Street. Eka Maiauk.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I believe the applicant was online, but they have since left the meeting room, so I'm not sure if we can...
Okay, could you try and?
Try giving them a call, yeah.
I don't know whether it's a man or a woman. Pardon? Are they here?
Yeah, hello?
Hello?
Yes, hi, hello?
Yep, we're ready to proceed with your application. Could you please introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name is Eka Maiauk, and I'm the owner of 222 Monroe Street.
Okay. All right, let me just check with my panel. Do we need a presentation on this matter? Pardon?
I don't need one.
Because of the loss of the tree?
Can I just ask a clarification? Is Urban Forestry recommending refusal of this one?
Yeah, because...
No, variance four.
I'm not, I wasn't sure. There's a refusal memo on file, but then a condition. So Chair, can we get clarification?
Hello? Through you, Mr. Chair. Urban Forestry is recommending refusal of variance number four. And if you're not in favor of refusing that variance, then they would ask you to impose condition number one of their Urban Forestry conditions.
All right, did you hear that? Larry?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Okay. So do we need a presentation?
No, but that leads me to another question. If we were to refuse variance number four, is there any way for this application to proceed, like, would eliminating the front basement walkout then eliminate the need for variance number four? I just don't know what's triggered by, what part of the application triggers variance number four?
Can I explain?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so variance number four, we're asking for walkout of the basement. And as I understand, the Urban Forestry also asked for the application of the condition, which actually we already submitted. We already done the arborist report, and one month ago, we submitted the application to remove the tree and injure. And it's not only for walkout, the tree is actually, we find dangerous. It leans towards the house, and, you know, the roots all out there. We did also the camera report of the sewage pipe, and the roots go through that. So we would respectfully ask to approve this variance. We're going to speak to Urban Forestry and explain to them, it's not simply to have a walkout, it's like a danger, because the root destroying like our house and our neighbor also, 220, she has the root going through the basement walls as well. And we worried for that tree like to fall down a little bit, because it leans towards our house.
You would be comfortable with forestry condition number one, where you have to negotiate with the Urban Forestry?
See, their condition is that we submit official application. We actually already fulfilled that condition, because we submitted this application a month ago.
Okay. All right. So in light of that, do we need a presentation, or can we go into committee?
I'm ready to move for approval if there's no other questions.
Okay.
And forestry number one as a condition.
All right, do we have a secondary?
And which planning?
Pardon?
Through you, Mr. Chair. There's a planning report with conditions.
Yeah, in accordance with plans. Okay, so there's another condition, Yim?
Yes.
From planning to construct in accordance with plans.
We submitted a date.
We can't hear you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. In accordance with the site plan, elevations that are dated March 5, 2020, and it relates to the exterior main wall, the rear, the front and rear exterior main wall heights.
Okay, that's the condition of plan.
Okay, so F1 and the planning condition. That's your motion. Is there a secondary? Okay, all in favor? Okay, all opposed? Okay. Alright, application is approved, subject to the conditions of planning condition and forestry condition.
Thank you.
Alright, now we move on to 48 Harshaw Avenue. The purpose of this application is to construct a new three-story dwelling with front yard parking pad. And before us on this application, we have materials submitted by the applicant, we have correspondence from Transportation Services, reports from Transportation Services and Urban Forestry, we have support from 26 Lesser, 26 and 48 Lesser Avenue and six form letters in support from 38, 45, 47, 48A, 59 Harshaw Avenue and 48 Harshaw Avenue. And we have correspondence in opposition from 35 Harshaw and 48 Lesser and 55 and 26 and 51 Lesser and 51 Harshaw and three form letters in opposition from 14 Lesser and 13 and 76 Lesser. Mr. Marzato, please.
Yes, hello, good afternoon. My name is Thomas Marzato. I'm the owner's agent and designer for the home. I would like to bring to attention that since a few days ago, we received one more letter of support from number 61 Harshaw. And I would also want to say that the owners of 36 and 48 Lesser have removed their letter opposition. The owners have contacted the neighbors, both of course, support and oppose. And there's just one item we'd like to add, it's not really a variance, has to do with the neighbor on the west side, number 51. We share a right-of-way with number 51. It's, we're proposing a setback of 1.2 meters, which is within the bylaws, but the neighbor was concerned about access to the back. So the neighbor and the owners of 49 have agreed to increase the side yard setback there on the west side from 1.2 to 1.32 meters. So just to provide good access for both homes, well actually, especially number 51 to the back. But just like next to briefly, the project consists of demolishing an existing two-story dwelling and build a new three-story dwelling. Two bedrooms will be located on the second floor and the third floor will have just one bedroom. The growth floor area will be 27, 39 square feet. It'll be reduced a little bit, probably 40 square feet, since we're making the house narrower now, just to increase the west side side yard. I would like to bring to attention that the existing house has a licensed front yard pad. Unfortunately, we cannot have that pad, at least that license anymore because we are building a new home. Communication with transportation, we proposed to have an existing parking pad that is completely in our private property. Existing permit pad has straddles both the boulevard, city boulevard and the private property. So basically, we're moving the pad further into our own private properties. Again, the floor area, total floor area would be 27, 39 square feet. Like to mention that we had discussions with planning back in the spring and what was appropriate was to step back the floors, moving up from first, second, third floor, just to accommodate sidelines and just to make the house look in keeping with what's going on on the street. We've recently submitted approved variances located near our project. There are a large number of approved applications to demonstrate that the street is in a very major transitional period. Also like to say that with planning discussions, we reduce the height from 10.1 meters to 9.7 meters. Briefly, I'd like to go through the comments regarding the variances, I'll briefly go through that. Item one is regarding platforms. We believe that the yard enclosures are minor. The location of the front platform is similar to the location of existing platforms at 47, 51 Harshaws. The rear platform is only 20 inches above grade. There's also an existing board fence along the east side that provides privacy for both dwellings. Item two, again, exterior stairs and platform. We believe that stairs and encochment is minor. The location of our both front stairs is similar to the location of existing stairs at 47, 51 Harshaw. Item number three has to do with landscaping. We're basically maintaining approximately the same existing landscaping area that's there because they have a permit for a parking pad. So basically, we're just moving the parking pad forward, sort of towards the back, so the landscaping area pretty well stays the same as what's there right now. Item four regarding height and number of stories. We've surveyed the street and we found that there are eight approved three-story homes on Harshaw. The log behind of the house with a slope roof is 11 meters. Our proposal is a flat roof in a building height of 9.7 meters, so we're sort of penalized because we're having a flat roof. So the flat roof is 9.7 meters above grade. If it was a slope roof on top, it would have been 11 meters, so we're actually well below. Also, to reduce the visual impact of the building height, the rear and front walls, as I said before, step back and the third floor area is reduced to 68 square meters compared to the ground floor. Also, I do, we submitted a number of photographs of existing, we said, actually, we're sitting built homes. Number 161 is an existing built three-story home and is similar to our proposal and also has a front yard parking pad. Item number five regarding maximum building length. The new building will have a building length that is three feet greater than allowed. The new house, number 47, which is our name, the very similar length to our proposal. We believe that the variance traditional length is minor.
Your time is up, sir.
Item six is...
Mr. Marzato, your time is up. Perhaps you could just wrap up?
Yeah, I'd like to say that the, what we're proposing is in keeping what's the, what house has been built on the, on the street and that we have good support from the neighbors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I have one question, so Larry, you go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Yim.
Okay, just only one question because he hasn't gone to variance number eight. It's gone to regard to the front yard landscaping. If the parking pad is removed, will that affect variance number eight?
It would affect the landscaping, it was fixed slightly because right now, there's an existing parking pad there.
Yeah, exactly, but they asking you to remove that.
Yeah.
Parking pad, will that increase or eliminate variance number eight?
No, no, we still would have it because we gotta have access to parking, which is set further back.
Oh, okay.
So we're basically keeping the same landscaping area that's there. But basically, what we're doing, we're replacing the existing parking pad basically with a driveway.
Oh, okay, interesting.
Larry, do you have a question?
Yes, thanks, Chair. Just quickly, I noticed the FSI allowable is point zero, 0.4. You're going to 1.12, which on the surface of it seems a rather dramatic leap. Have you done, I mean, you've shown a number of new homes in the area that look rather large. Have you done some comparable sense of what some FSI's are?
Yes, we submitted to committee a list of approved FSI's and I would say there's more than 20 homes that are either FSI between point nine and up to 1.2 actually. So if you look at the list that we submitted, quite a few homes. Let me just find out, I can give you the addresses.
Oh, yes, that's fine, I must have, I thought you wrote this one.
We submitted photographs of two homes and there's, I would say, half a dozen homes that have a similar sort of style of what we're doing. It's a street in very high transition, very high transition.
Yeah, I see it now, thanks very much, I appreciate that, I would agree with you. Thank you.
Alright, any further questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have another one. Is variance number 18 and 19, since the parking pad is removed, do that affect these two variances or are they going to be eliminated?
I don't understand that.
Oh, that variance is number 18 and 19 both concern with the front yard parking. And since you have to remove the front yard parking, will that, will that removal affect these two variances? Because number 19, for example, you said that it's going to provide a certain size of the parking.
Number 19?
Yeah. Or you're just moving it back?
We're moving it to the back, I don't see, I'm moving up to item 11 for variances.
No, Mr. Marzato, you have different numbers than we do. Our last two variances concern parking spots, so one is the proposed parking spot is located in a front yard abouting the street and then the last one is the proposed parking space will be 2.2 meters in width and 5.3 meters in length. And Ms. Chan wants to know if, if these are affected or still variances that you require because you're going to eliminate the parking pad that you presently have?
Yes, yes, we have. And the size of the parking pad, actually, we consulted transportation and they were quite satisfied with the size of the parking area.
So these are variances that you require?
Yes, yes.
Okay, any further questions?
I didn't see that, okay, thank you.
But the number 18 cannot be true though, if you move your parking back, how can it be abouting a street? Number 18.
Well, we have to remove the parking pad because the existing parking pad straddles the boulevard, then we're not allowed to do that by transportation.
Through you, Mr. Chair, the parking, they can't have the parking pad because they're building a new house, so they should be providing a garage.
Parking on private property.
And I understand that planning is still opposed to that variance.
Yeah, it's a bit confused to me because, Mr. Chair, it's confused to me because one time he said that he will put a driveway there and then that means it's not a parking pad. And then, and then now it's the number 18 still states means it is a parking pad.
Right.
I just do not understand that.
Through you, the driveway is only a driveway if it leads to the required parking space, which would be behind the main front wall or by way of a garage or carport. So the fact that they're not building a garage, it is a parking pad? It's not a driveway?
Oh.
It's a parking spot.
Okay, so, yeah, what he said was not correct then, okay, thank you.
Alright. Any further questions? Alright, we can move on to Larissa McHelenko.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Like, I'm living in this building for 23 years and I use a driveway between houses all this time because I have two car garages, yes.
We're having trouble understanding you. Could you speak up a little and a little more slowly?
Ah, okay, sorry about that, I will try different, I will try on the computer, it's one second. Oh, excuse me. Yeah, I am owner of 51 Harshaw Avenue.
Yes.
And I'm living, yeah, and I'm living in this house for 23 years and I share a driveway with 41 Harshaw Avenue because I have two car garages in my backyard. Two car garages, it is like the left side. And this parking, I have in front of house, in front of my house, I cannot park my car from Harshaw Avenue because I have city tree, huge city tree. Driveway is very important for me because I am working in one and my son has diabetes, I need have some parking space close to my house. Neighbor was contacted me and he said he's going, you know, like increase this proposed parking because previously on plan, it is 1.2 meters from central line, but he want to increase it for 12, 12 centimeters. Like, for me, it's good, is the best option to keep existing driveway, but I don't know if, if it's possible, but I'm happy, you know, like just get through my garages, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? No questions? Alright, we can go back to Mr. Marzato.
The original design that was submitted for Sony Review, they had a side yard setback of 1.2 meters, which is less than what's there right now, which is about 1.37. So what we're doing right now, we're going to reduce the width of the house and increase the side yard from 1.2 to 1.32 meters. So it's basically close to where the existing wall is right now, which is 1.3. We're very far of it, but basically, right now, we're moving the new wall basically to the same location that existing wall is. Also, I'd like to bring attention...
Mr. Marzato, are you changing any variances?
No, it's not, no, it's not a variance, no, we're just being good neighbors, we're giving her more room.
No, no, but, but is, is the side yard measurement changing?
Yeah, it's increasing from 1.2 to 1.3.
Yeah, have you changed that already or is, is that...
No, no, it came from discussion from last night between the owners and the neighbor. It's not a variance, we're just being good neighbors, we're just giving her a little more room.
It's not a variance?
No.
Okay, alright. Thank you. Okay, so is she going to be able to park her car where she wants to park it?
Yes, because we're basically keeping the same width of the lane as to the back that we're in right now. So the new wall will be in the same place where the existing wall is.
Okay.
And actually, it'll be a little bit better because we don't, we won't have a chimney sticking out of the side wall, so actually it'd be a big improvement. Because the width of the driveway at the chimney is 1.27 meters, now we're going to be at 1.32 meters, so we're actually making it even a little bit better.
Okay, alright, thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Marzato? Can we go into committee?
Sir, just quickly, I was slowing my mute button. I noticed that there's a lot of correspondence from what looks like neighbors in behind. Many of them concerned about what looks like overlook. And I just wondered whether the applicant has seen those and has any comments on those concerns that have been raised.
Yes, I submitted photographs of the rear yard. There are existing mature trees along the backyard, so it totally screens the back.
That's in the winter, I get that, or sorry, in the summer, I get that, but have you considered maybe doing some screening on your, the balcony, second story balcony, it looks rather large from the numbers?
Yeah, we could do screening.
Have you considered doing any screening of that balcony?
Yes, we could do that, but the neighbors on the east and west side have...
There are existing mature trees along the backyard, so it totally screens the back.
That's in the winter, I get that. Or sorry, in the summer, I get that. But have you considered maybe doing some screening on your, the balcony, second story balcony? It looks rather large from the numbers.
Yeah, we could do screening.
Have you considered doing any screening of that balcony?
Uh, yes, we could do that, but the neighbors on the east and west side have no objections. It's the neighbors at the back, but and the neighbors at the back are quite far from our balcony. We're not really overlooking anybody. But if it's a problem with the side neighbors, we could ask screening.
Well, I did notice that there's several letters of opposition, so I wonder whether the owner would be open to doing that kind of screening on the second story balcony?
Sure, sure. I don't see a problem.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, go into committee. All right, any comments or do we have a motion?
I don't, I'd like to make a couple of comments. I personally feel this application is large for the lot. There's quite a number of variances and I understand the agent has provided us with some comparables, but when looking at comparables, I don't, I think this is going to be one of the largest houses, the second largest house on the street. And I find some of the houses that currently exist, the infills, to be large. But we're, he's asking for a FSI of 1.12 and I do not see, apart from 12 Harshaw, houses that are that large, especially if we look at the square meters of the proposed house. I think it's big. And I think that's also, and I also have some concerns about the larger balconies on this house personally. I think this is, given the number of variances and reductions in soft landscaping, too much house for this lot. That's just my view.
Okay. Any other comments? Do we have a motion, Lisa?
Sure, I'm prepared. I don't know where my colleagues sit, but I'm, in my view, I would like to bring a motion forward for refusal of the application.
Do we have a second here?
No, I'll just speak to, I'm not sure I'm as concerned or about the size. I'm looking elsewhere on the street in the neighborhood and it is a street and another street in quite considerable transition. Seems to me that many of the houses here are of comparable size and style. I was happy to hear that the immediate adjacent neighbors' concerns have been addressed in terms of parking. That's an important issue. I do think that, I mean, balcony is huge, but with appropriate screening, it should be fine. I get your point, Lisa, but I'm not sure it's that out of character with what I'm looking at is some of the other new builds on the street.
Okay, Yen, do you have any comment?
Yes. Oh, this is very tough thing for me, a tough one for me. When you look at it, there's so, there are 19 variances, it looks like it is a lot, but the, actually, the only thing that jumped to me is that if they modify some of the balconies, they will eliminate a lot of those variances. And then actually, the biggest problem for me is that number 12 is like, have to justify 2.8 times increase. But I listened to Larry's comment that with the new development on the street in this area, probably it can accommodate that. So I will plan to support Larry's and support the application.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Larry, are you going to do it?
We had one for Lisa to refuse.
Oh, Lisa, did you bring a motion or did you just say you were refusing?
I brought a motion forward for refusal, but it's pretty clear, I think that failed.
Okay, well, let's just canvass, is there a second or for Lisa's motion to refuse? No, okay, does someone have a different motion?
Do you want to move a motion, Larry, or do you want me?
Pardon me, I'm slow on the draw here. I will move a motion to approve. I would like a couple of conditions, though. I would like the second story balcony being screened, in its, the entire perimeter being screened. And I would also suggest if the applicant isn't doing it already, that the parking pad, even though it's on private property, should be permeable pavers to address the concern about soft landscaping. Are there any, there's an urban forestry condition, number three?
I believe so.
So with the urban forestry condition, number three?
Pardon?
With urban forestry condition, number three.
What about the third floor?
Third floor balcony no screen?
Yeah. So screening on all the balconies, Larry, or just?
Yes, I, yes, I was mostly concerned about the rather large one, but I think that's an appropriate amendment, that the third story balcony be similarly screened.
On all sides?
All sides?
Yes, all sides. I want to address the concerns from the opposition from the rear.
Okay. All right, do we have a second or?
I would second that motion.
All right, all in favor of the motion? Motion passes. One dissent. You have your approval, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, have a good day.
Okay. So I suggest we take a five-minute break at this time because I know 493 is going to be a long application.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just anybody else who, I don't know if the afternoon session is listening, they were supposed to have joined the meeting at 1:00. It is now almost 1:30. We still have a number of applications to go through. Apologies to everybody who's been waiting. I think we will, if the chair, you said how long of a break? Five minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? And then if?
We still have three.
We still have three applications as well, and then we have a very long afternoon as well, and staff have not had a break either. So I don't know if after this you want to take another break or we'll just plow through. But people who are, people are waiting online. I just want you to know.
Well, I think we should finish the morning, take the five minutes, finish the morning session, then take a half an hour or so for lunch.
Take a half an hour, Mr. Chair, that's too long.
Well, we need to have some lunch.
I understand that, but with the virtual hearings, people have logged in unless at the point that we finish the morning session, maybe we'll have to have them. How does that work? Do we have to send another invite out or can we just ask people to log back in at a certain time?
No, we can, we can change our sort of message that we put on during lunch break to just say that we'll return at a later, at a later point.
Can people disconnect and reconnect?
We will, we'll have the WebEx on the whole time, so if they're connected, they can stay connected, they can disconnect and reconnect if they want to. It shouldn't be a problem.
All right.
Okay, so we're taking five minutes now. Be back at 25 to 2. Well, she used up, we used up all the easy-peasy ones. So wait till you hear this guy on this one. The next door neighbors. This is 493 Sackville. He's written about four letters, all huge. We are, we are muted, aren't we?
We are muted, yeah.
Good.
For real.
Pardon?
I think the YouTube video is still going, but they can't hear us.
Okay, so I'm going to proceed. We're now at 493 Sackville, there's, there's Yen. 493 Sackville Street. The purpose of this application is to alter a two-story townhouse by constructing a rear two-story addition, a new third-story addition, interior alterations and a rear detached garage. We have before us on this application, material submitted by the applicant, correspondence from planning, transportation, traffic planning, heritage preservation, and reports from urban forestry and heritage preservation services. We have support from 483 Sackville and seven form letters in support signed by owners and occupants of 1 and 16 Alpha Avenue, 485, 489, 501 Sackville, 491 Sackville and 4 Alpha Avenue. Opposition from 495 and 497 Sackville, 14 Alpha and 499 Sackville. Mr. Galbraith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would assume that you would like a brief presentation?
Yes, well, we have serious opposition, so I think we need a presentation.
So the, the proposal is for a three-story addition. The design was created in close consultation with Heritage Preservation Services because of the, because it's in Cabbage Town. The height and slope of the roof was designed so that it would not be visible at all from anywhere on Sackville Street. This is in accordance with past practices within the Heritage District and similarly was done with 503 Sackville at the north end of the townhouse row. The only place on the public streets where the addition will be visible is from along Alpha Avenue where, which, which T, the T intersection in front of the subject property. The, the proposal requires, oh, excuse me, the, so Heritage Preservation Services supports the project or does not object. Subsequent to their indicating their support, based on discussions with the neighbor to the north, the height of the building was reduced further by another 10 inches and sloped differently to mitigate the, any shadow impact on the neighbor to the north. So four variances are required. First is a building depth. 14 is permitted, proposed is 17 point, or 15.77 meters. This is a 26-centimeter addition to the existing length of the building, which is 15.51. The average depth variance for townhouses in the area has been 16.94, which is much larger than is proposed here. And 503 Sackville is over 16 meters in length. And the neighbor to the immediate north at 495 received a variance of length for 15.6 meters. The FSI is 1.18. An average townhouse approval in this area is 1.26, so we're less than the average. FSI is far and away the most common variance that is sought and approved in the neighborhood. The resulting building will only be a little over 1,900 square feet. It's not a super large building and it's appropriate for its context and for, you know, a modern growing family. The FSI is distributed the way it is because of the heritage comments. The third floor is not able to be located closer to the front wall. It's back over four meters from the front wall. And so that sort of pushes the square footage to the back of the property. It's the only possible where it can go, frankly. The front yard landscaping is an entirely existing condition. There's 0% now. We're actually going to be, subsequent to submitting the application, we've taken another look at it and we will be able to finish or to squeeze in about 12% soft landscaping. I understand they is hesitant to revise variances at this stage. If they wish to accommodate it, we would be happy to increase the, well, decrease the amount of variance to 12% or continue with the 0% as it's entirely in existing condition. And then the wall separation distance variance, we're looking to square off the building and fill in what is essentially unused space between, between the townhouse units. The, the bylaw requirement is actually larger than the property is wide, so it's impossible to actually meet that requirement. And I'm not aware of any historic townhouses in Cabbage Town, at least in this area of Cabbage Town, that actually provides anything close to that amount. Side yard setback variances are really common in this area as well, and they are, they all result in a building on the lot line, essentially a zero side yard setback. We've also done an We've also done an extensive shadow study and, because we know that that was a concern of the owners of 495, that...
Your, your time is up, Mr., Mr. Galbraith, could you wrap up? Your time is up.
Sure. Sure. The sunlight reduction would be roughly be about 9% in the worst case scenario. We circulated a community letter back in February and we only had one, one inquiry based on that. That's it for me. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Panel, any questions of Mr. Galbraith?
Chair, for me, just a quick one. So you mentioned, did you say 503 Sackville has already gone, undergone a similar kind of renovation or, or story addition?
Yeah, so 503, back, it was, it's an old one. It's like 1987, I think. They had a third story or a three-story rear addition. And their, their depth is actually a little bit larger than, than what we're proposing. It's also set back from the front wall, again, to meet that, that view plane from the opposite side of, of Sackville.
Right, so does it have the same kind of sort of height projection over the existing row of townhouses?
It, it's a third story, so it, it projects above the row of, of two stories. In my, in the supplemental material document that, that I provided, if, if you would like to turn to page two, it, it shows the three-story, the three-story 503 Sackville. And if you, or page three actually might be a better, a better photo. It's the, from viewing, viewing 503 Sackville from the rear lane. So it's, it's similar in, similar in height. I don't know what its actual height is. I don't believe it required a height variance. Neither do we. We're more than, more than a meter below the height permissions of the zone, which is 12 meters. What, what Sackville's actual height is, I, I can't say other than the fact that it's a three-story building, which has, but had its density shifted to the rear as we are proposing.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any further questions?
I just have a quick question. One of the issues, I don't think it asks after, is the zero meter setback. You're basically proposing to fill in a little strip between the two houses. Typically, you, any of the other townhomes in this block have that, what you're proposing, that condition where you're filling in that strip, having a two-story addition?
In this townhouse block specifically, no, I don't believe so, but in other townhouse blocks, it's been sought and approved, a larger variance than we're actually proposing.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Galbraith. We'll move to Mr. Schmer.
Hi, so my name is Mike Schmer. I live at 495 Sackville Street on the north side of 493. I have expressed a number of concerns to the owners dating back to a year ago regarding their proposal. And I have given submission to the committee of adjustment on a number of items that, that I would like to go over briefly now, as well as some additional comments that I have at the end. So my first comment is the sheer size and mass of the addition that's being proposed. The average square footage of the homes currently in this townhome block are approximately just over 1,100 square feet. What is being proposed is 65% bigger in mass than the average home on this townhouse block. So to, to me, that's quite significant. The second point is the historic or the heritage appeal. While the planner did indicate that the third floor addition could not be seen from Sackville Street, the house is actually on a T junction, so there is no sidewalk on the other side of this house. It is Alpha Avenue. Anybody walking up and down Alpha Avenue could in fact see the third floor. That is a violation of the guidelines for conservation for historic places in Canada, sections 4.31, 4.3, item 18, and items 20. My next point is infrastructure. The, by enclosing the common area on their side, the rear portion of the addition, in the existing addition, is over top of the sewer that feeds this town or this row house block. By setting precedence in enclosing this, they're also thereby cutting off any access to future repairs or maintenance that might need to be done on the sewers. The infrastructure is quite old. It's well over 100 years old, so that to me would be a concern. The concern directly on my property, one of, I guess the first concern, is the impact on my HVAC system. So my HVAC system utilizes a large skylight over the upstairs hallway and staircase in my house, which is actually primarily intended to capture solar gain. That basically provides heat for the majority of my heating for the house, particularly during winter months and entirely during fall and spring. It's a really nice system. It's a very green solution. It basically uses purely solar gain to, to provide the bulk heating for my home. The shadowing created by the third floor has a fairly significant impact on my skylight and particularly in winter months. I appreciate that the planner provided a lighting analysis, which apparently was the worst time of year in March and September, but I'm not worried about heating my house in, in latter March or in September. I'm worried about heating my house in wintertime. The shadowing from this would in fact completely shadow my, my skylight or my opportunity for solar gain in December, have a 65% or something like that shadowing in November and January, and also a significant amount in October and in February. So it would actually create a, a problem for me to heat my home. It's, it's that much of a problem. My next, also very significant point that I'd like to make in terms of impact for my house is impact on natural lighting. I have nine windows in my house, 10 if you include my front door. This impacts five of them. I have two windows in my kitchen that face this common area. They would be impacted by a reduction in natural light of an estimated 80%. I have a main floor bathroom or washroom window, which would also be impacted by the same. And I have a second floor washroom window that would be impacted by an estimated 60% reduction in natural light and a 100% reduction in direct sunlight. That window gets direct sun all morning long at the moment. My rear bedroom window would also be impacted by a reduction in approximately 50% on average throughout the year of direct sunlight and a reduction of 100% in winter months. So the impact on lighting is substantive. My next point is on landscaping and green space. By adding the shadowing, not only for the yard, but also less green space as a result of the garage, we're already challenged with drainage in the area. If we reduce trees, we're going to have more challenges. There are three trees on my property. None of them would show up on the survey that was provided by 493, so I'm kind of curious as to why they were not included in that survey. One of them is practically on the property line, right where they proposed the front corner of the garage would be. And then I have two others as well. So I'm quite concerned about that. Finally, what I found a little bit disappointing, quite disappointing, was the letter that was sent out to the neighborhood by the urban planner soliciting support for this proposal. In the letter, they state the design and asking of the building has been designed...
Your time, your time is up, sir. Would you just wrap up now?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. So my, my concerns with the information provided by the urban planner are simply there's a lot of false information and incorrect information. And I'm, I'm just concerned that when we share incorrect information, particularly if it's for soliciting support, that that's, that's just not right.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Schmer? No questions? Okay, move on to Gina Marasco.
Hello, everyone, and thank you very much, Chair. Just so that everyone knows, I own a house at 497 Sackville Street, so I'm two houses north of the house in question. The first thing I kind of wanted to comment on was on, as Mr. Schmer had said, just the, the way in which the information was shared initially, that it came, I think, from Mr. Galbraith first, just in our slot. And at first glance, we get, we get a lot of these throughout, a lot of people are doing renos, but, and I don't know a lot about them, but I thought, oh, my goodness, this is, there's nothing minor about this. It's massive changes. So that was my first reaction and I knew I could not support it at that time, so I just sort of left it alone. And then I got a day later another message from the owners or a letter in my slot, which was basically this thing. And, and, and that's, that's all I got. And so in terms of the third story addition, it, it is pretty significant in terms of it will be seen. There is another one at 503, as Mr. Galbraith said, and it was there when I moved in. I've been in this neighborhood particularly for 16 years and in Cabbage Town for 20. So it was an old addition and I, I have to tell you, it abuts the St. James Cemetery, so it really is not obstructing anything, whereas this one at 493 is right in the middle of the row houses. And so it is, it, you can see it. You can see it from Alpha. You, you can see it. And, and it's different than 503 for sure. I do have some concerns about what they're proposing for the front, at least it looks like they may have amended it, but they, they said there would be 0% now, 12%, but I'm not sure if there's looking to, to add an entryway into the basement, which is, which would be different and does not exist anywhere else. I'm concerned a little bit about the proposal to build the garage. Not so much for a garage, but I think where it abuts, it looks like it's going very, very close to the laneway and it's very difficult to maneuver back there in terms of parking, which we all do. And I'm not, if it's a garage, then it's a garage. It's a, if it's intended uses for something else, like a laneway house, I would like to know that. And I do have concerns about the lighting as well, particularly in terms of that common area that Mr. Schmer was, was referring to. The way these houses were built, solid houses, well, actually very well engineered and thought out in the day, they slim in the back so that that common area allows for windows on both houses and gives basically the only light access to the dining room. That would be severely impacted for my neighbor to, to the south of me. But, and I also think that a lot of the, the rest of the additions would impact lighting and, and the green space as well, which has already been addressed. And I'm just concerned about, in, in term, again, you know, I think the, some of the previous presenters have talked about the character of their neighborhoods and that this would significantly change. The care, neighborhood people, I think, live here for the quietness of it. And, and so I just, I think it would significantly change things. I am actually surprised about Heritage. They're usually much more difficult about getting things done, but I, I'm not sure how that happened. But, and I think that perhaps, I don't know if there's an intended use for a single home or, or other kind of rentals, and that would significantly, significantly concern me, the impact on parking, traffic, and just changing the nature of this very quiet, dead-end street. This is a row house. They're all attached. Anyway, I think that's, that's it for me. And I thank you for listening.
All right, does anybody have any questions? No questions? I just have, I have a question. I was, I, I was, I inspected the property on the weekend and I was standing on Alpha Avenue and I could see that there was a tree in front of 493 and 495 and I, I couldn't see, for example, the triangular air conditioning structure on 495 and I couldn't, I could hardly see anything on 497 because it was blocked by the tree. From the rear, I could see the air conditioning system from the back on 495. So is there, it, so do you think the third floor addition at 493 will be visible despite the tree?
Yes, I think it'll be visible. You can't see 503. That's always amazed me that you cannot see 503's addition in the back from the front, but you can, I think you would be able to see this very much so. And it's right in the middle, like, of the, of the rows of houses. It's different from being at the end where there's a dead end and your neighbors are in a cemetery.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Galbraith?
So I think I have all the comments. So first, I want to reiterate that Heritage has reviewed this and it has been designed to their specifications. It will not be visible from either side of Sackville Street. And yes, it will be somewhat visible the farther you go down Alpha, but Alpha is a short, dead-end street. And as, as the chair mentioned, most of it will be blocked by that, the tree in the front yard, which is proposed to be retained. The, let's see here, so sewer. So there is a sewer that does run underneath all of the townhouses in the row. That's an engineering concern and obviously we will not be seeking to impact that in any way. The client's property is serviced by it. So the skylight and shadowing. So we, we modeled both an as-of-right condition, i.e. no variances, and versus the proposed. And in December, you know, we, we looked at, at all four of the, the points of the, the seasons of the year and compared to what could be built with no variances, there is no difference on, in terms of shadowing onto the skylight, which, you know, we presume is meant to also work in winter where you have cloudy days and at night as well. There's no difference in terms of the shadow impact from the as-of-right permissions with what's being proposed, including, especially in December. December has the least amount of variation. With regards to light in between the two houses, if I could draw your attention to page 10 of my supplemental materials, there's a photograph that was taken on March 21st, which is the day of the, the spring equinox shadow studies, page 10. And you'll see the amount of light that gets between the buildings. The only, the only window between the buildings that receives any natural light is sort of the top half of the second floor washroom. The rest is entirely in shadow and it is in shadow all day. This is the most amount of light that that space receives in sort of March and September. In the winter, it's certainly 100% in, in shadow. With regards to the garage, no variances are required for the garage. The, the, the trees on 495... for the garage. The trees on 495 are actually lilac bushes. They're new, and they're not protected by the, by the tree bylaw, and it's my understanding that the owner of 495 has approval to build his own garage. With regards to the comments from 497, there is, it's not going to be, there's no rental unit that is proposed. There's no new front entryway. It's a, it's a light well. And we're actually going to be increasing the amount of soft landscaping that is in the front compared to the existing condition. I think that is all of the comments that were received.
Thank you, Mr. Galbraith. Does anyone have any questions?
I'll start. Thanks to everyone for great presentations and great information. 491 and 489, I guess are the two adjoining townhomes on the other side of the two folks that are opposing. Have you, there's reams of material on this file. Have you spoken with those folks?
The, so we have, we have letters of support from the neighbor to the south. We attempted, on more than one occasion, to speak to the owner of 497, and they just, they didn't seem to be interested in talking to us. The addresses farther away from the adjacent neighbors, we provided the community notice, which respectfully didn't have errors in it, and it was correct. And nobody responded to it. We also have, as I noted, letters of support from people on Alpha as well, who are the only people who would be able to see it from the front.
Sorry, Chair, I was just specifically, 491 and 489, which I guess are the two immediately adjacent, the other way?
Yes. Oh, yes, that is correct. Yeah, we have support from both of them.
Okay, so you've got support from them.
And 485, and 483.
And that, is that, is that the extent of everyone who owns along that townhome road?
That, that might be correct. I don't have the full list of addresses, but I believe that might be correct. So there are two addresses that jump out, and I'm just looking at my list here, and two that jump out are the, the two people who spoke today.
Fair enough. Thank you. The Alpha Street issue, I just want to mine that a little bit. I was looking at that site, and Alpha Street is a dead end, and the homes along it are existing, one, one and a half, maybe two stories, but they have no front yard. So these are just, along Alpha is just entry. Is that correct?
That's, that's pretty accurate. Yeah, they have, they would have a front yard, but it's less than, less than a meter deep.
Yeah. So basically, there is no front yard. So would homeowners be affected by this application from, for example, their backyards? Like, would they be offended by seeing it from their respective backyards?
No, they would not be seeing it from inside their houses. They would not be seeing it from their backyard. The only time that they would see it is if they were out on the street and looking east. And even then, it would be mostly obscured by the tree in the front. On page five of the supplemental materials, we have sort of a photo simulation of the addition. And it's, it's kind of hard to see because it's going to be kind of hard to see. It's mostly obscured by the trees.
Yeah. I appreciate the tree argument, but I'd also argue that the tree argument is, is like, you know, two and a half seasons of the year, right?
Possibly. I, I'd not think it's an evergreen, but off the top of my head.
And just one last thing, just to the rear, I was trying to find from my materials, what's behind this row of houses? Is this the, is the cemetery directly behind?
No, it's a large, another large townhouse development that's, you know, three-story units. It's a pretty big, it's a pretty significantly sized project with underground parking and everything. Much, much more modern.
Okay.
All the units there are much more significant than what is proposed here.
And I just wanted to confirm. So you've had extensive and exhaustive discussions with Heritage, have you? So, I mean, it does, quite frankly, this is a Heritage townhome, and it is a, you know, you can, it's quite visible in terms of what the addition is. So Heritage is completely and totally satisfied with that this is in keeping with the various Heritage policies of the OP?
Absolutely. So we, Heritage signed on to the original design, and then we reduced the height by 10 inches. And so there was a follow-up email that says, yes, of course, we're still okay with it being smaller. It was designed very much in close consultation with them.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, we can go in and to committee for any comments. I can't hear you, Yim. You're muted.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'd love to add a comment about seeing the addition from the street, or if you really look, you can see it. I'm not too sure why you can, you don't want to see it. Because the first idea is that if it's really overpowering, that's we like to emulate the sounds of addition. But definitely, you're going to put addition, if you really want to look, you can see through the tree, and then I do not see there's any problem. Also, it actually has moved way back, and it is also built by Heritage. I'm quite comfortable with the location and size of the addition. When you look at all the variances, I consider them to be minor because two of them are actually existing conditions.
Yes. Any further comment? Lisa?
Yes. I, this one is a difficult one. I see arguments on both sides, to be honest. But I do have concerns about the side addition and the impact on the neighbor. You know, it has been touched upon, but, I mean, that leaves that little strip of land basically useless for the side neighbor. So I have an issue with that. I have an issue with the impact on the immediate neighbor attached to this property. And I do think it still will be visible from the street. So I am not in support of the application myself.
Well, I visited the site. I had difficulty seeing the roof from Alpha. It's a very short street, and you have to look very hard to see it. You certainly can't see the next-door neighbors, 495's rooftop thing. With respect to the back, I think Mr. Galbraith demonstrated in that photograph that, that there was very little loss of light because there was very little light that got there in any event. So I don't, I don't think this is going to have a significant impact on, on the neighbor or the neighborhood, and I would support it. So, do you have any comments, Larry, or any further comments?
Yeah, I'm, I'm always of two minds on these kinds of applications where you have a contiguous series of townhomes or row houses, and one is proposing to do some fairly dramatic renovations that have an impact on everybody else. And usually when, for example, when we have an application from a semi-detached, we always get the view of adjoining semi-detached versions. I think that's important. In this instance, I'm, I thought the agent did a pretty good job of not only describing it today, but also in some of the submitted material, quite a thorough analysis of it. You know, in some respects, just as Yim says, you know, who cares what matter if it looks like? These are the kinds of things that are aesthetic, and everyone is going to have a different view about what looks good and what doesn't look good. I'm, I think I'm leaning towards the fact that the number of variances are, are actually quite modest. I did hear the agent offer up to do some additional soft landscaping. I think we should, if we approve that, we should take him up on that and build that into a condition. I am also, I think, convinced by Heritage's approval. We all know that, you know, in Ontario, in Toronto, the Heritage Department is usually quite rigorous about these kinds of things. And they put these kinds of applications through a fairly extensive review. And in this case, on two occasions, they have confirmed that they're quite comfortable with it. So I'm also convinced by that. So I think my own view would be I'd be leaning towards supporting this one.
Okay. Do we have, any further comments, or do we have a motion?
Want to move, I can move for approval. I would like to move for approval with Heritage's four street conditions, number one and number two, and also add another conditions that the applicant will add some soft, or increase the soft landscape in the front. Is that what the conditions would be there?
Yeah, I think we should, again, we should hold them to their offer to increase the soft landscaping if we're going to approve it.
Okay. That's the conditions.
All right. Do we have, are you a seconder, Larry?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
All in favor.
Okay. One dissent. Do you have your approval, sir? Thank you. 79 Hastings Avenue. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a front one-story porch, rear ground floor deck, and rear two-story addition with rear basement walkout. On this application, we have plan of, materials submitted by the applicant. We have correspondence and support from 81 Hastings, 25 form letters and support by the occupants of Hastings and Alton Avenue. Mr. Dolivera?
Hi, my name's Mike D. Olivera. I'm here representing 79 Hastings from a replacement site located at 911 Duncanport Road.
Okay. Would you just hang on while I canvass the panel to see if they need a presentation? Do we need a presentation on this? No, no. Yim, no? Okay, thank you, Mr. Dolivera. We don't need a presentation. We'll go right into committee. Do we have comments, or do we have a motion?
I thought this was pretty straightforward, Chair. I, it looked like an appropriate proposal in keeping with the character of the street and the community. I thought it had lots of support. I thought the variances requested are fairly minor. To my calling views, I would be happy to move a motion to approve.
I'll second your motion. Very good.
All right. All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
1132A Dover Court Road. The purpose of this application is to construct a new one-and-a-half-story laneway suite at the rear of a lot containing an existing two-story semi-detached dwelling. And we have materials submitted by the applicant. We have reports from planning, engineering, and urban forestry. We have opposition from 349 Westmoreland, 1134 Dover Court, 355 Westmoreland, 1142 Dover Court Road.
Mr. Chair, I've declared an interest, so I'm going to step out of this one.
Oh. Right. Okay. So Ms. Valentini is recusing herself. We can proceed now. Mr. Carley?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Very good. Good afternoon. I'm the agent for Susan McCathy, the owner of 1132A Dover Court Road. Since the time of the application and the original hearing date of April 1st, I've retired as an architect. So as this project proceeds forward, I'll be working for my good friend and colleague, David Olson of Olson, New Orleans Architect. As the agent, we are proposing a one-and-a-half-story laneway suite for Susan's personal use at 1132A Dover Court. We designed this laneway suite in the spirit of the city's new laneway suite zoning regulations, and have been able to achieve the design before you within the mandated setback and height restrictions. However, we are seeking approval for two minor variances, one to do with the structure's width, the other with the ratio of interior floor area to the existing house's GFA. We believe our request that variances meet the four tests. When we began to design this laneway suite for Sue, we were very conscious that this was within new legislation. We wanted to protect the existing cherry tree on site, and of course, protect neighbors' trees, which provide extensive shade, almost full of, and privacy for their backyards. A visit to the site shows just how much privacy these existing trees provide. We have obtained an Arborist report from Patricia Thompson of Thompson lesson, and understand and accept the Parks Board's tree recreation conditions. We are also very conscious of the issues of privacy of overlook. We wish to design a suite that gave as much privacy to the neighbors as possible, and in turn, gave Susan her privacy too, especially from the overlook of the tall, old houses on Westmoreland Avenue. The L-shaped site we have is unusual, and our semi-detached front leads to a rear yard, which abuts the dead-end lane and stands south behind the two houses. So, we've designed an L-shaped structure which forms the west and north sides of the small courtyard of the existing cherry tree. Western section is one-story and is quite low in profile, about equal to neighbors' and structures. The two-story portion of the structure is along the north, and for most of it is sweated across our setback, then the neighbor's driveway, which is a total of about 3.9 meters to their existing two-car garage. West and north windows are very limited to preserve privacy of both the block and the block. Prime windows face southeast into the courtyard and cherry tree. The first variance relates to the overall permitted width. Because of the unusual lot width of Seattle, we believe this for additional width is minor and is slightly in keeping with the site. As noted earlier, the setbacks, including height, are maintained. The second variance relates to the fact that the imposed interior floor area, in this case, 150.8 meter square, exceeds that of the house's gross floor area, which is 164. This overage of 9.1 square meters is less than 9% overage, which we-
Chair, can I just interrupt? I'm having difficulty, this is an important part about giving some of the statistics on the proposal. I can't make out what he's saying.
Oh, I'm sorry. Am I speaking rapidly?
You sound distant from the microphone.
Okay, I'll, is this better?
Yes.
Much better, yes.
Much better? All right.
Could you just repeat that portion that you were going through?
Certainly. The second variance relates to the fact that the proposed interior floor area, which in this case is 115.8 meters squared, exceeds that of the house's GFA, which is 164. The overage is 9.4 meters squared, which is less than 9%, and I believe that's minor. We note that the two letters of objection have aired in their statement on this GFA and have reached erroneous conclusions about the size of this ask. We have received the May 1st planning report, which raises no objections to the design or request for variance. We would be pleased to have the committee accept their recommendation to tie approval of the variances to the plans we submitted. Finally, although- Finally, although laneway suites are now permitted by relatively recent legislation, we note the existing lane is almost fully built up, including some large structures, and that the properties to the south of Sue's also have a good number of rear ancillary structures. The Google aerial view we submitted illustrates this well. This laneway suite proposal is consistent with the four tests, it meets the official plan and zoning requirements, the two variants requested are minor, and this laneway suite is appropriate and in keeping with the neighborhood and consistent with the legislation. It will fit well within the context of the lane and backyards and will be an asset to the neighborhood. We ask that you do approve our request to minor variance. Thank you.
Sir, I didn't quite catch what you said about properties to the south, just towards the end of your submission.
Oh, the property, the lane is a dead-end lane, but the properties to the south of Sue's also have some garages that they access. They also have ancillary structures.
Okay. But not laneway houses?
No, no. The laneway terminates at my client's property.
Okay. So I understand this is an unusual situation where your client has property not only behind her house, but also behind the adjoining two lots, so that she has much more space there, an L-shaped property.
Yes.
But it, and I know that laneway houses are very new. Is there, is there any, do you get any comfort from the legislation and the purpose of laneway houses, et cetera, to increase the size? It seems to me that it was intended to be smaller ancillary buildings. Ancillary, to me, means that it's ancillary to a primary building that's much larger. And I think that's, your two variances address the issue perfectly because it's, you know, one is, you're supposed to be no more than eight meters. Now you're twelve point four five and your laneway suite is larger than your primary residence. So is, are there any, can you point us to any sort of philosophy with respect to laneway houses or any precedents that speak to the issue of large laneway houses on all the land, building on all the land that's available? Or do you have to confine it to something that's proportionate to the size of and smaller than the primary residence?
I don't think that has to be the latter case. Our interior floor area is only nine and a bit percent above the existing house. Existing semi-detached is not large. I see this as an opportunity to provide a good example of what laneway housing can be. It's a well-designed structure. It's inward looking. It preserves the neighborhood privacy. The lane is still not as built up. And I think it's in keeping with, I look at it in the context of the neighborhood and I feel it'll be well-integrated with that neighborhood.
All right. Mr. Clay, Yim, do you have any questions?
No. Yeah. No question.
No, is there someone speaking in opposition?
Yes. Quite a bit, quite a few people.
I'll wait till I hear from them.
Okay. Laura Kerr?
Yes, hello. Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I could not hear the previous, not Mr. Clay, but I could not hear the agent very much at all. So forgive me if I cover ground that's covered. My home is at eleven thirty Dover Court and will be very adversely affected by this proposal. My property backs directly onto the eleven thirty-two A property and its backyard. I feel the term laneway suite is very much a misnomer for this proposal. A laneway suite is usually a garage and something over top, resulting in either a one-story, a garage with a one-story on top or a two-story structure. The house being proposed, this is definitely a house, and even the architect's stamp calls it a laneway house, not a laneway suite. The variances requested are excessive. There are four semi-detached homes here, eleven twenty-eight to eleven thirty-two A. My property is only fifteen and three-quarter feet across at the front, and I assume the others are similar. This new house, they're asking for twice that of the property with a corresponding additional square footage increase on the inside. To me, this is not a minor variance. It will be a house much larger than the semis at eleven twenty-eight to eleven thirty-two A. Also, eleven thirty-two A is a city-owned home, so I just throw out the question, who speaks for that property? Is it automatically, is there automatically no opposition from that property? If that's the case, I feel very much alone in this area. My objection concerns are also the adverse effects of construction on access to the laneway and services. Also, this is actually more of a driveway than a laneway. As you say, it is blocked off from the actual laneway that goes behind the other houses. Has there been, I think he mentioned that there was an arborist study, and I do like the fact that the cherry tree is being kept, but I've been advised that with the digging required for the foundations, that the roots of this existing tree could very well be damaged, resulting in potentially the loss of the whole tree. In this neighborhood, there is very little open ground. A lot, the front yards are very small and eleven twenty-eight is actually paved over. So the loss of that open ground at the back is going to, I would think, produce a lot of problems for runoff and flooding problems. We do not really need more covered ground in this area. I feel my property values will be decreased for a number of reasons. The courtyard will be very obtrusive to my backyard. It could be potentially busy most of the year. And I have no air conditioning, so I need to have my windows open, so any noise pollution or problems with the lights would really affect me and my kitchen backyard and the upstairs back bedroom. The lights show, the lights are shown to be four lights at the back there, but they don't, what kind of lights are they? Are they the very bright motion-censored lights? Are they, are they outdoor lights? How bright are they? Excuse me. The owner of this property is not living in the country, so there's no direct control over any potential problems with tenants or property issues. Like indicated, but what if the tenants have cars? Parking is at a premium in this area, although I know it's the premium everywhere. Who will ensure the upkeep of the soft landscaping and what will it be like? That soft landscaping is very close to my, in fact, it's right along the edge of my property and there's not very much of it.
So Ms. Kerr, your time is coming to a close. Would you wrap up, please?
Yeah, I'm ready. I'm on my last sentence. Again, there's no privacy between my property and the proposed structure. I know housing is needed, but at what cost? And will this be the housing, affordable housing, rental housing that we really need? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone have questions, Ms. Kerr? No? Okay. Elana Spanu?
Hear me? Hello?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Ellen Spanu. I live at eleven thirty-four Dover Court Road, which is directly next door to eleven thirty-two A Dover Court Road, the property for which the zoning variance is requested. I, along with the other members of the eleven thirty-four household, oppose the request for variance, which is not minor. I am today speaking on behalf of everyone in the house. I've lived at eleven thirty-four Dover Court Road for most of my life, and the home has been in our family since the nineteen sixties. My mother and my uncle own the property and also live in the house. In addition to the statement, my sister, Lucy Lamenta Spanu, has written a letter giving our reasons opposing the request. The request would let the owner of eleven thirty-two A build a very large one-and-a-half story laneway property that is actually larger than the existing building at eleven thirty-two A. The property would look directly over and into our backyard at eleven thirty-four our home. This would affect my family's privacy and enjoyment of our property as well as its value. It would affect the light in our yard and our ability to grow our garden. It would increase the traffic, including foot traffic in the neighborhood and the availability of parking spaces. The owner of eleven thirty-two A has rented her property for the last six years at least, and her proposal would allow her to rent the new proposed structure to additional tenants. It was mentioned that she is not in the country, so that is a concern to us, that how would she be dealing with any complaints or anything that needs immediate attention. We intend that this is the use of it, that she will be renting it. We fail to see how building this structure will contribute in a meaningful way to the community and neighborhood and feel that it is being done at the expense of our family and the other neighbors as well as her existing tenants. The construction process will introduce many-
Ms. Spanu, we don't deal with construction issues, so please, just tell us about the impact on your property.
Oh, I see. Well, the impact, I wanted to say the process of construction will impact the property? In that, through the process of construction, there'll be noise and-
Don't deal with construction. Please, don't talk about construction.
Okay. Thank you. Well, then, I'll have to gloss over all of that. All right. Well, I wanted to say, well, there are additional reasons in the letter dated July eighth that was emailed to the committee. I do not want to spend any more of the committee's valuable time restating those reasons. I ask that the committee read the letter and please deny the request for variance at eleven thirty-two A Dover Court Road. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Committee, do you have any questions of this witness? No? No? Okay. Let's move on to Abby Wong.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you to the committee. My name is Abby Wong. I am the owner of eleven thirty-six Dover Court Road, so just two houses north of the proposed eleven thirty-two A property. And I am, of course, in agreement with my neighbors regarding proposed building is much larger than what constitutes a minor variance, as well as the building in no way aligns with the character of the neighborhood and indeed spans the width of three properties in some. It also appears as though this building will cast a shadow upon our neighbors' homes and backyards and will have a line of sight down onto those properties. And of course, there's the mention around parking being an issue around here. Secondly, the drawings proposed, and this is more sort of related to the impact on my, personally, is that there's a proposed gate that will access the laneway from behind based on the drawings. And one of the features of the laneway as it currently stands is that it can only be accessed from one end, which is the north end of the building, just south of, or north end of the laneway from, close to Davenport. So this new property appears to provide a new entrance to the laneway for foot traffic that could not only be, that could to date have not only been accessed by, could, sorry, could not only be accessed by the tenants of the property, but conceivably by others walking in from Dover Court Road. This laneway is used as a safe, clean play area right now for our neighborhood children, including, of course, my own two young children. And given this limited size of our properties and lots and given the current state that we're currently living in, it's really one of the only sort of clean, safe spaces for our children to be able to play and, you know, for the foreseeable future. And secondly, because it's a dead end, it's also largely sort of graffiti-free and litter-free, because primarily because access is limited to it. Further, this gate and unit are located at the dead end, right there, and so it does create the potential for a space for, you know, individuals to congregate and for sort of illegal garbage disposal, which sort of speaks to the lack of maintenance of the current unit or the current house at eleven thirty-two A. And this really hasn't been an issue to date in our neighborhood. And so further, the last, given the size and dimensions of this laneway suite, which is essentially a house, it really does set a precedence for future laneway suites, as this is the first one on this laneway, and it's really based on legislation. And so I think it would be a really unfortunate precedent to set. And lastly, given the size and layout of the proposed laneway suite, it does provide the opportunity for this to be eventually converted into a multi-unit structure in the future, which I really think goes against the intent of what a laneway suite is meant to be and the purpose that it's supposed to serve. And so me and my family, of course, we stand in opposition of the proposed structure and ask the committee to reject. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, panel? No questions? All right. Kelly Banks? Ms. Kelly Banks there?
Ms. Banks, are you there?
Hello?
Hello?
Ms. Banks, are you there?
I am here, but I can't hear you.
There we go.
You can't hear me.
We can hear you.
Oh, you can? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chair, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My husband has submitted the letter, and I oppose to this application. The variances being requested will negatively impact the enjoyment of our property and neighborhood. The proposed structure would not respect and reinforce the existing lot pattern of the established neighborhood. This proposed structure would not fit appropriately within the scale of this established neighborhood and does not limit the impact of the existing physical character and construction of this neighborhood.
Ms. Banks, where is your house in relation to this laneway suite?
Oh, sorry. I'm at three forty-nine West Marlin Avenue North. We are three houses south on the, and east facing, no, west, sorry. We're facing, so we, our backyard faces this proposed property.
Okay. Go ahead.
The proposed structure does not maintain the existing detached and semi-detached residential character of the neighborhood. It would detract from the enjoyment of my backyard and those of my neighbors, as this imposing structure would loom over our backyards, leading to an unpleasant feeling of our open spaces being crowded by a large structure. We feel that this is not a minor variance. The proposal should not be classified as a laneway suite as it's proposed to cover the rear of three existing housing lots, not one. It is sixty-one point three percent greater than the allowed eight point zero meters. However, the existing property has a frontage of four point eight one meters. The, I understand that there might have been a calculation error, but when the agent says it's only nine percent bigger than the proposed or than the variance, nine percent is not a minor variance. The general intent and purpose of a city's zoning bylaw would not be maintained as it is not a laneway suite proposed, being proposed. It's a large, new, imposing house. Access to the proposed laneway suite would not be by the required private walkway as access to the rear of the lots is by a narrow shared walkway between eleven thirty-four Dover Court Road and this property. The general intent and purpose of official planning- The general intent and purpose of official plan would not be maintained. According to the City of Toronto definition of a laneway suite, a laneway suite is a self-contained residential unit located on the same lot as a detached house, semi-detached house or townhouse, and generally located in the rear yard next to the laneway. The proposed structure would span the rear of three lots, which is not maintaining the general intent and purpose of the official plan. We are also concerned about the mature trees on this property due to the imposing structure proposed, as mentioned already and by the letter from the arborist. As a neighbor of this property, we are respectfully asking the committee to not support this application as it is not a minor variance for the reasons stated and we are not interested in setting a precedent in our neighborhood. Thank you for your call.
Thank you. Any questions? No questions? All right. Maria Morgado and Agostino Ira.
Hi there. Sorry, I'm just putting my husband's phone on low because he's also logged into the webex on his own. So my name is Maria Morgado and I am one of the property owners of 355 West Moreland Avenue. Our property will have a shared fence along the backside of our property, which would be, I guess, the side of this laneway house. I want to say that it's a house, not a suite, as it is enormous. It will be a complete facade for us as in, it will be like a big concrete wall that will be erected at the end of our driveway, of our, sorry, of our backyard. We have lived in this home for over 20-plus years. We ourselves built a new home back in 1989, sorry, 97, 98. We took into account the respect of the neighborhood when we were building our home. We had actually had interest in extending that laneway so that we could ourselves have a garage in the back. However, when we canvassed the neighborhood, there was a lot of pushback to it, so we respected that. And so we ended up actually building a home that has an integrated garage at this point. We've also taken a lot of time to make our backyard an oasis for us. Part of the reasons that attracted us to this property, our property, is in fact the large amount of greenery that exists in the backyard from the homes that are directly connected fencing with our backyard, one of them being this property, 1132A, and the houses south of that as well as the houses north of that. The laneway ends one house north of our property, which, that house being 357 West Moreland Avenue, as I understand, is also a city-owned home and therefore it is a housing home. Therefore, they have not brought forth any opposing or any sort of, I guess, decisions on or their own views on what should happen or not happen. So I am completely opposed to this. My husband is completely opposed to this. My entire family is. We have three generations living in this house from as young as a two-year-old to a 70-year-old. We have enjoyed this property all of this time. Our backyard is our oasis and is of our living space for both all of our family as well as our pet. It will be a very large home, not a laneway suite that is proposed, it is that it is. It will be looming and overlooking onto our backyard and very many backyards because the way that this property is set, it actually is, has, it will share fencing with one, two, three, four, five, six, it will share fencing with six properties. Four of them being Dovercourt, which would be the three properties south of it, and the one property north of it, and two of them being behind it, being our home, which is 355, and 357 West Moreland. Of all of these homes, I believe that the one just south of it is a rental property, which I believe is also a housing property from the city. So again, there's no, no voice being heard for that property. But the house just next to that, which was Laura Kerr, is objecting to it. The house south of that, which is 1128, has also submitted their objections to it. 355 being myself and of course, our neighbor just down the street, Kelly Banks, is also objecting to it. The variances are definitely above and beyond. The plans show that they have, in the basement, that they have a rough-in plumbing in an area where they have the, I guess, the boilers or whatever things for the home. Why is there a rough-in plumbing there? They have a fully, a full plan for a large bedroom with an en suite bathroom, a large closet--
Ms. Morgado, you're reaching your time. Would you please wrap up?
Sure. I'm also concerned for the impact that it could have as well as on the cherry tree that is there. It will, I will no longer have the view of those trees because it will be in our area. I also want to bring to the attention that councillor Anna Bylaw, who was part of the leadership work towards the laneway suites, is also showing that she also has concerns for this proposal as well, as it is larger than the typical laneway suite that is supposed to be part of the, I guess, the future planning of Toronto.
All right, thank you. Panel, do we have any questions now that the opposition has wrapped up? No questions? Okay. Mr. Carley?
Hello, yes? You can hear me?
Yes, but speak up because you're a little muffled.
I'll try to get right to the microphone if that's good. Are you good now?
Yes.
A lot was said, a lot quite erroneous. First of all, though, I'd like to go to the aspect of change. I think we all realize that laneway legislation, the bylaws new, but we recognize that change can be worrisome to people who have lived a long time in our neighborhood. But our proposal embodies the spirit of the legislation and will be an asset as things go forward in the neighborhood. Neighborhoods are intensifying and well-designed intensification is desirable. This is an opportunity to show how really good laneway housing can be. A lot of people spoke about a lot of things, but it's still about the two variances. And given this unique lot, we feel that these two variances requested are indeed minor in that context. Now, my client, Sue McCaffey, does intend to live in this suite, use it herself. It's not going to be rented. It's not going to be semi-duplexed, whatever one speaker said. To me, it's clear that the plan has not been examined. This is not a large structure. At number 355, it will not shade any of their lot. They have an ancillary building that will be about, is about as tall as our one-story portion. 355 has more overlook that we are worried about because we can see them, we have no windows on it by stock of the one-story portion. It's, the misinterpretation about shade and privacy also. Why we thought this was quite applicable, we are in the back, we're well shaded by existing trees, the one on our lot, but also the others around. The aspect of the two-story fronts the neighbors to our garage, but for all of it except about 10 feet, their backyard is well shaded by their tree and is currently apparently not being used. The aspect of the gate to the laneway, currently, there's a gate large enough for a car to go through the laneway at 1134. So we're just having a pedestrian gate. I don't see a problem there. And I'm glad the one speaker spoke to the fact that there isn't a garbage problem there now because it won't be in the future. So I, I understand people being resistant to change, but the city has seen this as a new bylaw. And I know that councillor Bala and councillor McMahon supported this. I have not had any correspondence with councillor Bala. That's the first I heard anything and I would wonder if you have anything on file from her? If you don't, then I would ignore them. In any case, we do feel it's minor and we feel it's a well-designed project that will be an asset to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any questions, Mr. Carley? No questions? Okay, go into committee. Do we have any comments?
Well, I'll start. First off, thank you to all the folks who made representations today. I thought you all did a really good job of representing the interest of the collection of residents that cluster around this property. I heard a lot of common, common views from all the speakers. Chair, I'd go back to what you said at the top of this meeting is that, two things. One, it's a very unusual lot in the sense that it extends behind two other properties, which is, and two, that, you know, I'm not sure that the city, when it constructed the laneway suite bylaws, were thinking of this kind of a property that would be suitable. I think the fact that it actually nests in behind two and three other properties is a problem. I think that the size and scale of this proposal, the fact that it's considerably larger than the house that's sponsoring it, is a problem. And I don't think at all really reflects what the city was trying to do in accomplishing laneway suites, which was a modest structure at the rear of an individual property. So I find that this is inconsistent with what I think the city's trying to achieve in respect of laneway housing and I will not be supporting this application.
Jim, do you have any comments?
Okay, I have, okay, I have, you know, it is a new site, but I think that the, first of all, the designer has gone through it with the planning department and then it seems that they are okay with the development of this. And as I can see, the design actually tried to address many things here, which they have put this two-story just way behind the main house and the part that extend to the other backyard is only just one story. If you imagine that part is large, it will be just the same. That's one point. The second point is that the distance from this part to the fence to the other backyard is actually seven meter, is 21, 23 feet. But to the main house of the semi-detached is almost over 60 feet. I think there's enough distance that the privacy thing will not be concerned because the only two-story is actually focused as a sector in the north side. And the third part, I see they try to mitigate the privacy thing is that facing all this backyard, the windows are basically quite small. They actually focus on, have windows that are much more than not looking directly into the whole backyard because that's quite a distance from those backyard. And I actually think that since they worked with the building department and all, they sort of recognize there's certain things that may not fit the typical situation of a laneway house. And I actually tend to think that this is actually a good development for the site.
All right, I agree with both of you that this is probably a nice development for the owner, but I also agree with Mr. Clay that I don't think this was the intent of the legislation and I don't think that the fact that the planning department didn't suggest that we refuse the thing because, they're looking at the technical issues. I don't think they're looking at the purpose behind the legislation per se. And I don't think that there, I agree with Jim that there's probably not a lot of the concerns that the neighbors have that are, concerns that they should really be concerned about, probably not going to affect, impact their property significantly or anything else. But I just don't think that when this bylaw was passed, that it was intended that it'd be, as one of the oppositions said, a house as opposed to a suite. I think it's to be ancillary, it's to be an in-law suite, as we called them, a little, or up in cottage country, a little, little top of the boathouse or something, a little place for overflow or whatever, overflow guests. But I don't think it's intended to be a full-fledged house, which this appears to be. So I would not be supporting that motion. So do we, to approve, do we have a motion?
Well, I'll move a motion to refuse this application.
Jim, do you second that motion? I don't think so.
I don't because, no, I don't agree with the motion, so you have to second the petition.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. All in favor of the motion? All right, and you're opposed, Jim?
Yeah, yeah, I dissent.
All right, you have your approvals. You have your, the application is refused. Okay, that's the morning list.
Jim, are you there?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if either speak, like the last time, towards the end of your last comments, I could hear you, but I don't know if you have another microphone because you kind of cut in and out and it's difficult.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I only have a microphone on the computer.
Okay, so you're going to have to lean into your computer a bit so we can hear you.
Okay, maybe I'm too far. Is this better? Is this--
Well, yes, but you don't have to go that--
Okay.
But speak slowly and loudly so we can hear you because you do fade in and out. Okay, so can we take a half an hour for lunch?
Yeah, fine, fine, by me. I'm not going anywhere.
I know.
C-30, are we coming back at C-30?
We'll have to come back at 3:30 and we have--
Yes.
I'm happy with going shorter if everyone else is.
Yeah, well, we have trouble down here because there are no restaurants that are open.
Oh, that's right, you should have packed a lunch.
I did.
See?
I just had a snack.
Ah, there you go. That's why--